Members of the Youth Advisory Board for being here tonight and doing this presentation for us. So it's all yours or it's all Commissioner Peters is, I'm not sure who's starting.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to let them introduce themselves. They did an outstanding job this year, and I know you're going to be impressed.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and jump in everybody. Actually, my name's Ashley Elrund. I'm with Commissioner Peters' office. And we're very excited that we had the opportunity to have the kids on this evening to do a presentation, since we haven't really been doing that since the pandemic started. So thank you for making the exception so that they can fulfill their year end project. They're really looking forward to telling you about historic, how historic this year's Yak Committee was. A lot of firsts, as you could imagine, the way that things have gone in 2020. And so on the line tonight, we have, speaking for a couple of minutes each, we have our Chairwoman, Maddie Marcos, our Vice Chair, Dylan Van, and then our Liaison to the Parks and Conservation Resources Board, Andrew Larson. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Maddie, our Chair.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Ashley, and thank you Commissioners for having us all over. I want to begin with saying what a historic group we are. Like Ashley mentioned, we have had a lot of firsts, including our cap. So the regular Yak participant cap was 25, and we surpassed that by having 32 applicants this year, and which was woohoo, yay for us. We had about 18 to 20 Yak members on our weekly Zoom calls over the summer, which I'll speak about later, how we transferred from monthly to weekly meetings. Throughout our year, we were able to have the opportunity to tour and learn about our local Pinellas County government. At Wheaton Island, JP Gellerman was able to give us a lot of history and background information on the island. At Animal Services, we were able to learn and hear more about the importance of caring for animals, especially what Pinellas County does for these animals. And at Botanical Gardens, we did not have a tour, however, we did get self toured in that we, some of us got lost in the parking lot. We also had planned our short term service projects, cleaning up, having a beach cleanup. However, we did not get to that point because of COVID-19. But COVID-19 was not a negative for us. It was actually a great positive for us, and it helped us learn more about each other and talk about inviting new ideas, and actually helped us in the long run. We also had a planned Law and Order Day that Ashley and Alyssa were very excited about. We would have two full days skipping school on campus with the Sheriff, Medical Examiner, and learning about more on our jails and courts. However, we did not get to that this year as well, but Dylan will talk about more of that. We did have to take three months off of our Yak meetings, our monthly Yak meetings, because about mid to end of March, we were notified that we were no longer able to meet in person. So within that three month break, Ashley and Alyssa were teamed up and willing to help us meet weekly and monthly through our Zoom meetings. And we just worked together to, you know, create a foundation and make up for that lost time. We did compromise with a year end project, our Mental Health and Wellness Fair. Before COVID-19 happened, we were going to do this as an in-person thing. However, we thought of the idea of doing it virtually. So within August, we're trying to make it official next year, having our Pinellas County Youth and Mental Health Month. So that's going to be fun for our next year start. And what we did was weekly webinars on topics of COVID-19, LGBTQ+ communities, excuse me, and substance use disorder, suicide awareness and prevention. We had professionals speak and answer some of our questions, and the public was more than welcome to join, and they had some questions as well. We recorded our webinars on Saturdays and had them posted on Mondays, which is why we called them our Mental Health Mondays, kind of a cute little ring to it. And we also created our promotional videos and our involvement on Yak. So the point of creating these videos was so our faces can be shown as the Yak team. And if anybody were scrolling through social media, as everyone does nowadays, if they see a face they recognize, they're going to be like, okay, what are they doing at Yak? What's Yak all about? What's Pinellas County? How can I make it a better place? You know, just to have that idea and thought process running through. We also created two subcommittees, our Marketing and Social Media Committees, and they were able to help us expand on our social media platform. So previously, we only had Facebook, and now we are on Twitter, YouTube, and Instagram. YouTube or Twitter and Instagram are relatively new to us, and we haven't really touched bases on those, as we will be doing that next year more. But on YouTube and Facebook, we have all of our Mental Health and Wellness Fair videos posted on there. So if you guys want to check those out. I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing us to have such a wonderful year, and I'm going to pass this on to our Vice Chairman, Dylan Van.
So as Maddie said, my name is Dylan Van. I'm a Clearwater Central Catholic, right off of US 19 up there. And so I am the Vice Chairman, and I have honestly learned a lot over these past few months. It's actually been quite a while since we've been operating since September of last year. But over COVID-19 and over these past few months in which we've kind of had to hit it hard, and also before that where we had to take it completely off, we've kind of really come across an idea that we can really turn this into what we want it, meaning that we can like, we can turn the past and we can take it for what it's worth, and rip it to shreds, and create a whole new future. And that is something that I personally, in my personal life, and also on Yak. And so as we've kind of come up with this, we've had to delve into the technological element of letting people know who we are and what we are doing. And so we are really going to hit social media really hard next year, because social media is a great way to reach out to the youth, and a great way for us as Yak to connect with the rest of our peers. And we really want to engage them in some of the more local legislation that maybe they really didn't know about. And personally, I wasn't aware of any of the legislation that went on in Pinellas County prior to Yak. And so we really want to kind of voice what happens, because it's so important. And so as we continue this idea of social media presence, we're going to come up with a new logo and design, which is going to kind of add to our appeal, and maybe get us more applicants for next year, which is more applicant, be able to have a more representative population on the committee. And so to follow up with that, we are, we came up with our mental health, as our mental health zone ours, as Maddie said. And so we want to continue our mental health advocacy, and no, Commissioner Peters did not put us up to that. We came to that independently. And we want to continue that, maybe not on the scale that we did this year, but at least minimally, because it's such a crucial issue in our county. And so in that, we've sent, we've sent, we're going to send a letter to the Board, or to the Pinellas County School Board, talking about how they have had, they've implemented these day, they're called Mental Health Days in public schools, where they have presentations on mental health. And so as we had discussions about these days, we realized that maybe the people who are giving these presentations, which are teachers, maybe aren't necessarily the right people for the job. And so we really, we want to kind of give them our piece and our feedback on these Mental Health Days, which is why it's so important for us to voice our opinion to the Pinellas County School Board. And we also think it's very important to voice our opinions to you guys as Commissioners, because we think it's really necessary for us to be able to, to give you our perspective as youth on new legislation that is coming in, coming into play. And so we also have plans to amend the bylaws, which will conform our new term length, meaning that we will instead run from, instead of running just during the school year, we will run from the, from September all the way to the following September, when the new council or when the new committee would be appointed. And so now I'll move on to the legislation element of my presentation. And so we really, so we had an adjusted term length, which allowed us to work over the summer, and really allowed us to move forward and jump bounds into what we are doing. And so in order to kind of make that effective, we needed to have more meetings, as Maddie said, and that's why we had weekly meetings. And so when we did kind of come up with that, we wanted to kind of blow this up and make it more, more relevant to our community, and maybe make it more known. And so we had the, we had Pinellas County Youth Mental Health Month be proclaimed by the BCC, which was honestly very helpful. It made it more official, which also kind of added more, I would say, relevance to our, to our youth community. And then also, we sent a letter of, from regarding COVID-19 and our return to school to the Pinellas County School Board. We surveyed, we surveyed the entire committee, and we were really representative in the way we wrote that. Maddie played a huge role in that. And then also, we also have plans to amend the way that our Yak appointed to the Parks and Conservation Board, Andrew, in the way his term works, because as of right now, his term expires. Cool year, and we also, we want to extend that to match our new terms. And so now that I'm coming to this, Andrew, it's yours. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. As Dylan said, I'm Andrew Larson, and I am the Yak liaison to the Pinellas Parks and Conservation Resources Board. Parks have always been something I've been very passionate about, especially our Pinellas Parks. I've lived here my entire life, and then almost as long as I have been alive, I've been enjoying the benefits of our great services. I've been riding my bike on the Pinellas Trail. I've been going to our Pinellas beaches and parks, and it's something that I hold very near and dear to my heart. So when I knew that I would have the opportunity through Yak to voice the youth opinion on the county board for that, it was something that I knew I was made for. So the first meeting I attended was the January 16th winter meeting, and that meeting was held at the currently under construction expansion of Wall Springs Park. And there I watched as they were building some of the structures that will be open to the public soon. And that was a really neat experience for me. Also, something that I found really cool at that meeting is, as Yak, part of what we do is our short term projects. And we were still trying to figure out what we should do. So what I did was I went to the Parks Board and I said, hey, where do you want youth involvement? And I was able to bring their feedback back to the Youth Advisory Committee, and we worked with that. And we did some planning with that, and that was really exciting. The second meeting I attended was on August 20th. It was obviously a virtual meeting, so that was new and unique. However, at that point, as Dylan mentioned, I was turned out, so I wasn't a board member at that point. However, I attended as a member of the public, and I just sat in and watched how that went. And it, that was also an interesting experience. So the proposed change to the legislation would basically extend my term through the summer, or not necessarily my term, the, my roles term through the summer, so that they could potentially attend an extra meeting and, you know, voice the youth opinion more and work more between the two boards, since they can have a great chemistry together. All right, that's all I have to say. So to wrap it up, I will be handing it back to our Chairwoman, Maddie. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew and Dylan. I just wanted to say what an opportunity it was to be a part of Yak and actually work with others and understanding more about our local government. Overall, I hope that you guys have a great rest of your day, and thank you very much for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak at this meeting. Ashley, or Commissioner Peters, if you guys wanted to add anything?
Thanks, Maddie. You guys are amazing, and you're great, and you're wonderful. And I can just, again, add that if you want to see some really impressive work, go to the Yak YouTube and take a look at some of the videos that they've made. They're incredibly informative, and the questions are very much on point, and they're very relevant. I think that's what's really important, is the questions and the conversations are relevant. And I think that what they put together in a short time on these weekly webinars was just, just outstandingly way over my expectations, and they did an outstanding job. You know, our future is bright when we have leaders like these young people. So thank you all for your hard work, and, and I hope if you're not graduating, going on to college, that we'll see you next year on the committee.
Yes. Well, thank you from me too. I really appreciate that. I will, I will look at your YouTube. Commissioner Long.
Yes. Thank you, students, so much for being here. There were a couple of questions I had for both Dylan and Andrew. And that is, I was interested in the comments that you made, Dylan, about your experience talking to us on the county commission. And I was curious, and you mentioned taking your thoughts, or the thoughts of the group, or your plans, or whatever, to the Pinellas County School Board. And I wanted to know whether or not you had given any thought to approaching the Board of Clearwater Central Catholics, since I believe that's where you said you attended school. What you are, you and, are you a senior?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a senior.
You know how I knew that from your shirt?
Yeah, you knew. So I, so I first, oh, go ahead.
No, I was curious about whether or not you had planned on bringing this information to the Board of Clearwater Central Catholic High School.
So I have, I have planned to do that, and I'm, so I'm also the president, I'm the student body president at my school, so I do work hand in hand with the administration. As I've planned to have a presentation with them and kind of have, and be in communication about what I, what I, about mental health and about kind of more of the problems that aren't necessarily, necessarily tangible. And so I really, because we, and we've, we've started to have presentations, or at least we did last year, on the previous, the previous president was also very interested in communicating this with them. And so last year, we had a major presentation on, on social media use, and also on drug abuse and alcohol. And so it's become, it's become a thing, a thing that's, that's necessarily, it's repetitive, that we've kind of done in the past few years. And so as President, I do hope to continue that and maintain that communication about these intangible problems like mental health and drug addiction and things like that.
Well, I will be happy to advocate on your behalf for that to happen. And you might just want to make a note that the next board meeting is October 1st at 6 o'clock.
All right. I will certainly.
Thank you. Andrew, you did not share with us, I don't believe, what high school you are attending.
Oh, sorry about that. I go to Palm Harbor High School.
Palm Harbor. And do you have an opportunity to go back to your students at Palm Harbor and talk?
Yes, I do. I serve on the Student Advisory Committee at Palm Harbor, and I, through that outlet, I'm able to speak with an assistant principal, and I could probably easily get in contact with the principal herself and address these issues.
Well, that is just fabulous, and I'm so happy to hear, see you all here this evening. And to Commissioner Peters, I want to commend you for the work that you have done, and Ashley as well. This is really building the future for not only our county, but for our next, who knows, county commission to come. So I hope that this has instilled in you a desire for public service. And Mr. Burton, I hope you're paying attention to these young people. They may be able to fit into one of our programs here within Pinellas County Government. It's a great career. So thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us.
Anybody else? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Welch.
Yeah, I just started. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, I wanted to, again, thank Commissioner Peters and Ashley for their great work with Yak. And to Maddie, Dylan, and Andrew, y'all did an outstanding job. I wanted to ask your thoughts just quickly on, after we're back to normal, do you all see incorporating the virtual environment going forward? In other words, when we, when we're safe and back to work and school a year from now, or whenever, would you still use Zoom? Did that help folks participate? Or would you rather have everything in person?
Commissioner Welch, Maddie here. I personally feel more comfortable going in person, as I'm a very social butterfly kind of person. However, I do know others, such as my cousin, who feel more comfortable going virtual, as they feel that they can share their opinions more freely, and aren't going to be judged or looked at differently for something they say, like in class, or if they say something wrong, and they just feel like they can get things done with no stress or low stress virtually.
Okay. Keep up the great work.
Sorry. So I have, I've talked with a lot of my friends and kind of people that are at school, and people who are doing virtual and who are doing in-person learning. And personally, I'm doing in-person learning. I prefer in-person learning. But I do know a lot of people that do prefer virtual learning. And as Maddie said, they do prefer, they feel more comfortable in that environment and being able to... Because, I mean, as you know, the high school can be very socially awkward, to say the least. And I feel like that maybe they feel like they're more comfortable at home without having to necessarily engage in some of the people that may not be as nice to them as maybe they should be. So I don't know, I see, I can see both ways, and I think that there's benefits to be in virtual, and there's benefits to definitely being in person.
Great. Thank you so much. Andrew, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Dylan had to say. I think there are certainly instances where in-person is advantageous. For example, with our Yak meetings, most of our meetings were onsite. We attended a Pinellas County Service Building, and we, you know, toured it and saw what it had to offer. And that couldn't be perfectly replicated online. However, I do think there's a very strong case for continuing certain businesses, like certain interactions online, as it increases availability. It's a lot easier to just, you know, log in from both a board perspective and a public perspective. It's, anyone can just, you know, go to the Zoom link. And we did have, at least at one meeting, we had a member of the public attending, which is something we never had at an in-person meeting. So that is something that we can definitely look at. But I do think, I, yeah, as Dylan said, it's a case by case basis. There are definitely pros and cons to both sides, and it's more about looking at the meeting, what its function will be, and how the pros and cons can work into it.
Well, absolutely. Well, thanks so much. Y'all are outstanding. Keep up the good work.
Right. And it sounds like that you got a lot accomplished on your Zoom meeting, so can't wait to see what that is. And please, I just wanted to encourage you to keep communicating with us. You know, come back and tell us what you're doing. We've missed you.
In the future, we hope to meet up with you guys more often. We were thinking about a half and half thing, meeting up with you guys half a year.
That would be great.
Madam Chair, you had Commissioner Eggers, who I think wanted something as well.
Commissioner Eggers.
And you're in Munich, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations, Commissioner Peters, Ashley, for the work you've done and the organization you pulled together. I, it seems like every year, we have a great group and a great, great production and great projects that they work on, and then the next year, it's even better. So I'm really impressed with the three of you, and I know you have a, a lot of other folks that are part of your team that have, have contributed in their way. And I was going to talk about how you are advocating for Yak, but you touched on that a little bit already. Really impressed that you've picked mental health as your, you know, the advocates for mental health in our county. Certainly, it couldn't be more important for the youth, especially high school students, and even younger that need that support. So thank you for that. And just, any, where are you guys going to school next year?
Well, I'm still a senior, and I'm currently attending Indian Rocks Christian School. But next year for college, I hope to go to the University of Florida, going through that application process right now.
Good luck with, good luck. How about, how about you guys?
Um, so I'm also still a senior this year. And so I want to, I've been looking into a few different schools, a few schools up north, and also California Technical out in California. So those are kind of my, my options right now, and obviously you as well.
Obviously.
There's a greater conspiracy here.
Yeah, I think so. But anyway, best, best wishes next year in your schooling, and thank you for all that you're doing for, for the county and for the kids of our county. I heard you guys referred to as kids, students, and now young adults. So all of the above, thank you for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, one last thing. I really need to thank Alyssa Bowers. She's with the Parks Department in 4H. And she's really the one that got them to go on Zoom. It was really, you know, she was critical, and she was a really important part of the team, and I didn't want to slight her. And you all have thanked Ashley, and you know, when they went weekly, that made Ashley's work go a lot higher. So she did a really, really great job, but it was really these young adults that did an amazing, amazing job. They, as I said before, our future is bright, as long as we've got young adults like them. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's get into our meeting. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. We will take public comment on issues on the local state of emergency, and any issues that are not on the agenda, we do have some public hearings tonight. So please, if you're going to comment on one of the public hearings, please wait. But, so Brian, what do we have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this local state of emergency or any agenda item, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it appears we have 20 or so people that wish to speak. Are we going to keep a three minute time limit on this?
Well, I think since this is the second round of public comment of the day, I'd like to keep it to two minutes apiece. If that's okay with everyone.
Okay. We will start with our first speaker then, which is Aiden Barnes. Ms. Barnes, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi there. My name is Aiden Barnes, and my address is 10240 127th Avenue, and that's in Largo. I'd like to talk about the numbers. In recent data straight from the CDC, we find that deaths labeled solely COVID only make up about 6% of all COVID-related deaths. That means the vast majority, 94% of deaths labeled COVID, are not COVID-only deaths. There are an average 2.5 other conditions associated with most, including hypertension and diabetes. In fact, 80% of all COVID-related deaths do occur in ages 65 and up. Since the vast majority of those affected by the virus are elderly, protecting the most vulnerable in nursing homes should be the first priority. Here's some positive data. According to the Pinellas County COVID Dashboard, cases at long-term care facilities continue to drop week after week and remain extremely low in Pinellas. More good news, not only have positive case numbers for all Pinellas residents dropped for weeks, positive cases remain low in our county. As of yesterday, ICU beds in Pinellas are at 27% availability, and only 8.8% of ICU beds are even occupied by COVID patients. Positive case numbers in Pinellas continue to stay low, as they have for weeks and now months. There are an average 130 to 140 COVID hospitalizations out of a million residents here in Pinellas. There are under 3,000 hospitalizations with COVID as a primary diagnosis in the entire state of 21.5 million Floridians. Of all the deaths labeled COVID in some form, children under 18 have an almost insignificant 0.001 death rate. The next age group, 18 to 29, 0.005 death rate. Ages 31 to 39, 0.01 death rate. As we know from CDC tests, many of these deaths were not even primarily from COVID, but were still labeled COVID. Sadly, many of these people had severe and multiple preconditions. They and the elderly are safer at home. They should protect themselves as they have in past flu seasons, as they would with any virus that would affect them. This is a practice that they should continue into the future. The rest of the public, including Pinellas County schoolchildren as young as three, should not be forced to wear masks to the fullest extent of the school day for a virus that doesn't even affect them.
I'm sorry, your time has expired, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, our next speaker is, I don't have a first name, last name, Everts. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and, name, spelling and address for the record, please.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. My name is Cheryl Everts. I live in Ruddington, Shorts, at 707 182nd Avenue E.
Thank you.
I am speaking out in opposition to the mask mandate. No surprise there. Since you have limited the number of minutes I have to speak, I'll try to make it brief and get to the high points. I'll skip the niceties. This order is violating our constitutional rights. Our quality of life has been diminished by your overreach. There are those who want to wear masks. They're scared. They're sick. They have a right to do that, but they don't have a right to infringe on my liberty. The only thing we're asking for is equal protection, as under Amendment 14 of the US Constitution. If you're sick or scared, by all means, wear your masks, stay at home. If you're sick, you should stay at home anyway. This has been a political issue from the start. If you can believe the numbers of cases and deaths, which I do not, I believe most do not, this really is not a legitimate health crisis. Risk of catching COVID is very low. Risk of dying from it's even lower. There's been too many reports of inflated numbers, false positive testing, not to mention test results of people who have never been tested. Healthcare patients have rights as well. We have a right to approve or deny medical treatment or medical devices such as masks. We have a right to refuse COVID testing. We have a right to decline that which is being opposed upon us by elected and unelected bureaucrats. I believe there will be a day of reckoning for businesses that discriminate against us and for politicians who deny us our rights. I believe there will be a day of reckoning for businesses that discriminate against us and for politicians who deny us our rights. By the way, we are now learning that you've spent $2 million on a tourism campaign, complete with marketing materials that display the use of masks. This leads me to believe that this is the reason why you have been reluctant to provide any criteria.
Your time, your time has expired.
So if you'll allow me, in closing, I just want to thank all of my fellow residents who are also concerned. I'll see you at the polls in November, if not sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have at least 20 more speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Kimberly Jolly. Kimberly, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Jolly. I'm a resident of Largo with Pinellas County Watch. I'm asking the board to not extend the state of emergency order. According to the information presented on the Pinellas County COVID Dashboard, there's no longer a threat or emergency in our county. The board has stated in previous meetings that you are waiting for instruction from the governor. However, the governor has stated on several occasions during his news briefing since March that he is leaving decisions up to the local governments on how to proceed with their response to COVID-19. If you're not willing to lift the state of emergency at this time, then at the very least, you need to provide the public with parameters in which you will lift such an order. The local tourism industry has spent $2 million of taxpayer money in an attempt to attract visitors to our area. However, what seems to have been overlooked is the fact that people may not want to travel because we are still under a pandemic or state of emergency. These are not phrases typically associated with let's go to Largo or Clearwater. Not to mention the economic toll all of this has had on family vacation budgets. This board made it clear when they closed the beaches that they don't want tourists here due to COVID-19. Spending $2 million will not change that. Even if, if we want more tourism, do not extend this state of emergency. And also the fact that you shortened the time, the length of time for people. We are working citizens and we cannot attend or speak at your meetings during the day. And we try to write to you and you continue to ignore us and don't even acknowledge that at your meetings that we write comment cards to you. And so we have to, have to, we have to be able to speak out. And for you to limit our time just minutes before your meeting is not really, is not acceptable, Ms. Jarred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is on the phone line, last four digits, 1557. If you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes, or I'm sorry, two minutes to address the board.
David Happy with Pinellas Watch. My address is 850 Lime Street in Tarpon Springs. County Public Health Response got $55.9 million in Emergency Cares Act funds from Pinellas. They said it was for PPE and contact tracing. We want an itemized list of where they spent $55.9 million. Why ever would your medical advisors ever vote for this to stop? If you send me $55.9 million, I will drive Pat Gerard's face mask bus in St. Pete and tell everybody on the loudspeaker to wear a mask also. I think you need to be very careful about the perception of conflicts of interest here because you're starting to attract the wrong type of attention for Pinellas as you play loose and free with the facts and the cash. We're now mindful of the fact that your weekly votes on the mask ordinance are a farce as Chairman Jarred presided over the christening of the $2 million mask propaganda program in Clearwater. But I appreciate the effort you go do to make it appear as if you're reviewing this weekly while simultaneously authorizing a several-month spend on mask promotion. By the way, most people I talk with aren't coming to Pinellas choosing other parts of Florida like Panama City Beach, which rescinded their mask mandates. You're hurting business, not helping it with the propaganda campaign. For financial oversight alone, Pinellas Commissioner should have an interest in ending the local state of emergency, regaining financial accountability for taxpayer funds and providing full transparency to all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Mr. David Waddell. Mr. Waddell, welcome back. And if you go ahead and unmute and give us your address and spelling for the record, you'll have two minutes.
You guys, I'm not going to do that. I had veiled threats, but here, here we go. I wanted to talk about, we had that septic agenda item earlier. And I wanted to bring that up because I understand we're testing our poop. I'm wondering if Dr. Cho, are you aware of that, that our waste treatment facilities are looking into the fecal matter for the virus? And then I, I also, Dr. Cho, like an update on testing and contact tracing and then the mandatory option. I wear a mask. My oxygen level is generally 96 to 98%. I have never been tested, but I have had diarrhea eight weeks. I'm not sure if it's because of the meetings or because maybe I just, you know, I'm asymptomatic and I got stomach problems over all this. But waste analysis, Dr. Cho, if you would comment, testing, contact tracing, mandatory reporting. Oh, and Dr. Cho, if you could give me an update on what you think about the Super Bowl and having a more regional approach. And any of this simple disobedience talk, uh, you know, people in Pinellas, you know, please, I mean, let's not hold these folks to stronghold and, all right, they're human. God bless you all. But Dr. Cho, I gotta have some answers. And oh, Dr. Jamison, you popped in. So my oxygen level remains well. I actually put a mask, a little surgical mask over my N95 just to help keep it clean. And oh, by the way, everybody, wear goggles. This is airborne aerosolized. Eggers, I'm sorry, Commissioner Eggers. I sent you that article in, from the newspaper, the university that's doing the study.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired.
And look at that, please, because you're an engineer and you know math is the universal language. Statistics and proven statistics, please. So Dr. Cho and Dr. Jamison, could you, could you elaborate for me?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Sherry Fiorenzo. I apologize if I butchered that. If you can go ahead and unmute and give us your spelling and address for the record, please.
Yep, Sherry Fiorenzo, Largo. The spelling's F-I-O-R-E-N-Z-O.
Thank you.
The mask mandate needs to be abolished. You have not given the citizens of Pinellas County any criteria as to what it takes to remove it. And now we know why. The planning was happening behind the scenes for an expensive pro-mask campaign, one with the message that says masks are here to stay. We now know that a large sum of bed tax money was spent on a campaign to promote our county as a masked destination, complete with a wrapped bus and all the fancy flags and signs and postcards. Madam Chair, who would not give us any answers over the last several weeks, was there promoting this campaign. While other places such as Panama City Beach are letting the mandates expire, our county is spending $2 million on the Rise to Shine Safety Campaign with pictures that are showing a person kayaking alone with a mask on, a small child on a paddleboard with a mask on. Are you kidding me? It's just not cute. We won't live fearfully in masks any longer. This has gone on long enough. If someone wants to wear a mask to protect themselves, that's their choice. If a business wants to mandate it, that's their right. I have a choice also, and I'm going to do whatever I can to fight for my rights. So I hope you remove the state of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker comes in on the phone line, last four digits, 0567. If you can go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, this is Jennifer Carrigan. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jennifer Carrigan. Um, I, last name spelled K-E-R-R-I-G-A-N. And I live in Temple, Florida, and I am opposing this mask mandate. The virus is only affecting the very seriously ill. It's not selfish to demand our personal freedoms back, like the right to uncover our face in public if we are healthy. And there's no doubt that those who are ill, if have their pre-existing conditions, should protect themselves as they should do for any virus. This virus is no more serious than the flu. And we did not shut down the entire country and Pinellas County for the flu. This has been political from the beginning. We have a local group petitioning to make masks a choice for Pinellas County residents. It started only three weeks ago, but now it's 1,500 strong and growing. The citizens of this country want the freedom to choose. So if, if you're sick or if you're afraid of getting the virus, you want to wear a mask, that should be your choice. But it should also be your choice not to wear one if you're healthy. And there's also another group on Facebook called Pinellas County Watch that basically has a goal for citizen oversight over you, the commissioners. Concerned citizens in this county will hold this board accountable for your actions. We continue to gain numbers and mobilize against this unconstitutional mask mandate, a heavy-handed restriction lasting for months that isn't even law. It's time to listen to what the people of the community want. You are elected officials, after all. You're supposed to be representing us and working for us. We're not working for you. Time to follow the data in our county and make masks a choice. The forced mask ordinance you imposed had more citizens against it from day one, and opposition against will continue to grow. It's my hope that this situation will be a deciding factor in Pinellas County residents voting out Janet Long and Charlie Justice and voting in Larry Ahern and Tammy Vazquez to the Pinellas County Commissioners. I am confident that Vazquez and Ahern will represent the citizens to elect them instead of continuing this mask mandate month into the future with no end in sight.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Thank you. And before we go on, I just want to ask people to please refrain from making political electioneering statements to us. That's inappropriate. Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker comes in on the phone line, last four digit, 1419. If you go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board. 1419, you're gonna have to unmute your phone line.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Dawn Peters and I am in Reddington Beach, Florida. I am also with the group Pinellas County Watch. And I am one voice representing many here in Pinellas County who are very awake. We are watching everything and you should know that. We work, we pay taxes, we're parents. Therefore, we are responsible enough to decide what is right for us. You are violating our constitutional rights. This mask mandate needs to be eliminated today. The numbers have been on a steady decline for both cases and deaths regarding COVID-19, with even more prominent decline in the mortality rate. This is extremely important to note. The CDC website has also downgraded COVID-19 from a pandemic down to an outbreak as of today on their website on the front page. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. Again, we're watching everything. We are very informed on the scientific data. I have several family members who are immunocompromised and none of these people wear masks because we all practice responsible hygiene and there are viruses going around all the time, every day. It is part of life. We're all healthy. We all stick together and do what is best for everybody around us. We are spending so much of our time doing all of this research, obtaining information, and for what? You guys ignore our questions. You ignore our calls for data. You roll your eyes at us and you act like it's an inconvenience for us to be speaking. With the exception of Commissioner Peters, who, by the way, thank you very much, Commissioner Peters, for standing for us. We have a right to open all of our businesses up to 100% capacity and operation. We, the people of Pinellas County, are also here to remind you that you, the Pinellas County Commission, were voted in and work for us. We do not take orders from you when you are violating our constitutional rights with something that isn't even a law. It is time to end this state of emergency. It is time for the mask mandate to be over. We are not wearing your mandatory masks.
Ma'am, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Isaiah Niall. Isaiah, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Isaiah Neal, N-I-E-L, 1433058 Street North in Clearwater.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak in opposition to the mandatory mask guideline that the county has instilled upon us. It's time to, it's time to end now. We've solved one problem with the perceived solution, but how many additional problems are we opening up that we have no idea about? I'm curious about what studies have been reviewed to support the mandate. But, you know, one, some, one study that hasn't been documented or shown is the cumulative effect of wearing the mask for hours on hours on hours for our employees and for our children. So we are literally actually in the middle of a county-wide live science experiment. And we don't know how it's going to end, but I can guarantee you there's going to be adverse reactions in our students, in our youth, in our families. We have no idea what it's going to be. We have children with rashes on their faces, breathing respiratory issues. We have students playing on playgrounds in 100-degree weather, sitting outside waiting for the bus with the mask on because you guys have required that of our students. I'm also here as a parent to speak to my children who, because of our physical, religious and health objections to the ordinance, they're not allowed to attend school. We have to keep them at home. And so they're deprived of the live education that the rest of the students are going through right now. What's the end game in all of this? When does it change? When does it end? Is it when the cases go down or the hospitalization rates go down or the death rates go down, all of which have been occurring? Or is this a political end game or a political agenda that you guys are using our families for, as, as political pawns? There's a hashtag going around that's trending right now called Save Our Children, and I'm asking you to save our children by ending, by ending this immediately. Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker comes in on the phone line, last four digits, 3183. If you go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Uh, yeah, my name is Tracy Kepler in Palm Harbor, Florida. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll start by saying that I am also very much against the mask mandate as well as the continued state of emergency. I don't feel like the board is looking at any of the data or studies that I have seen from 2010 through now that demonstrate the ineffectiveness of masks against the tiny flu viruses. Nor do you seem to be acknowledging the current data that shows our consistently declining COVID numbers that no longer necessitate the state of emergency or the unconstitutional mask mandate. I also cannot find any studies that would support the wearing of masks by healthy individuals. I feel that if you have these studies, either that show that healthy people should wear masks or that masks are effective against viruses, you need to make those studies public so we can see what you are basing your decisions on. Also, many of the establishments are still not honoring the medical exemptions for the masks, and many are now requiring them on all ages, not just those over 18 as stated in the mandate. I would very much love to spend my money and support our local businesses and restaurants, but I refuse to sacrifice my personal as well as my health freedom to do so. So until this mandate is removed, I will unfortunately not be putting my money back into our community. After the new Rise to Shine campaign, all I can say is that it's an absolutely disgusting display of obvious virtue signaling. There is absolutely no reason people should be wearing masks outside, especially in the Florida heat. And furthermore, you've included pictures of people on the water that are completely socially distanced that are wearing masks. There is, I just ask, what possible reason would that be for? That makes about as much sense as having to wear a mask over your face when you walk your 10 steps to a restaurant table, but then being able to have it off for an hour while you sit at that table. All of these rules are ridiculous and they all fall back to you.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Tracy. I don't have a last name. So Tracy, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board. I have a feeling, Madam Chair, that this is the same Tracy that just came in on the phone line. Tracy?
No.
Oh, okay. Is it different, Tracy? Can you hear me? Hello? Tracy?
Hi. There she is. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I apologize. My name is Tracy Sanders, S-A-N-D-E-R-S. I'm at PO Box 220 in Crystal Beach.
Thank you.
Also with the Pinellas County Watch. It's a Facebook, Facebook group. This is my first time calling in. I just want to thank you all for hearing us. And, you know, we are under 3K COVID hospitalizations in the entire state of Florida right now. Our population is 21.5 million. Pinellas has been at a plateau of over 130. Pinellas has been at a plateau of over 130 to 140 patients since August 25th. The bullying, and this breaks my heart, the bullying that is happening and the mental health of children having to wear masks is 100 times more harmful than COVID. And I was interested in listening to Dylan speak earlier, and that Janet and Dave, you two were very interested in what he was saying about mental health. And as Dylan mentioned, mental health is so important in our community. Suicide and antidepressive medications are on the rise. Drug abuse and alcohol abuse is also on the rise due to the closures of our state in Pinellas County, our state and Pinellas County, excuse me. I'm asking, how do you justify remaining in a state of emergency along with the unhealthy mask mandate when you know the facts and the numbers, as all of us have access to? I'm asking you right now, please, please, just listen and really dig deep down and ask yourself, why are we still in a state of emergency in this mask mandate? I ask that you take our calls into consideration, and I just thank you so much for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for the record, we have 15 remaining speakers. Our next speaker is coming in on the phone line, uh, last four digits, 3183. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board. 3183, you'll have to unmute your line. All right, Madam Chair, we're gonna go to the next speaker. Um, our next speaker is last four digits, 4341. If you can go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board. Last four digits, 4341, you'll have to unmute your line.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kelly Edwards. I'm at 1555 Hillview Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm also with the Pinellas County Watch, and I oppose the mask mandate. I'm gonna keep this short, as I've listened to everyone over the last two months, give data, science, and opinions on this matter. Here's mine. Who would have ever believed that simply breathing fresh air in public would be thought of as selfish and considered a crime? I stand for and support medical freedom. Medical freedom to me means freedom of choice, informed consent, medical privacy, and parental rights. A quote from Ron Paul, M.D., and U.S. Congressman states, "Freedom over one's physical person is the most basic freedom of all, and people in a free society should be sovereign over their own bodies. When we give the government the power to make medical decisions for us, we in essence accept that the state owns our bodies. Pinellas County has violated our medical freedom by forcing us to cover our faces and reduce the intake of oxygen by using a medical device. We are individuals, and we are not created equal. Masks can be incredibly triggering for trauma survivors, people who have anxiety, panic attacks, people with hearing disabilities, people with autism and other sensory disorders, and people with airway restrictions. These very same people who are being told we're trying to protect and keep safe are the same people who are being discriminated against, harassed, bullied, and refused service. This is absolutely unacceptable. Forcibly masking, testing, separating, quarantining healthy people not only is damaging to their physical and psychological health, it is also a human rights violation and a crime. Make the right decision and end the mask ordinance immediately. Those who choose to continue to wear masks, quarantine, and stay home absolutely have that right to continue doing so, but enough with the mandate. Thank you."
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is last four digits, 5375. If you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board, I'm sorry. And you'll have to unmute on yourself.
Hey, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners. I'll try and get a brief. My name is Kevin Kenealy. I'm a Dunedin native, I'm sorry, it's Kenealy, K-E-N-N-E-A-L-L-Y. I'm a Dunedin native, Dunedin resident. My mother is still a Dunedin resident. I'm a Dunedin business owner, and we primarily service children ages about 2 to 16. My grandmother also ran the Dunedin Community Center for 25 years, and my grandfather worked in the Dunedin wastewater plant for 20-plus years. So I definitely have a lot of familiarity with Pinellas County, um, a lot of background here. Uh, giving you an idea, my wife is also a teacher at the local school where the pandemic has, uh, when the pandemic hit, and they had approximately about 300 to 400 students there. And our business is a very popular local business that serves hundreds of local children, and has taken at least a 40% loss over last year's enrollment due to all this pandemic stuff. With the mask, with all the mandates, and especially the mask mandates, and also occupancy mandates, there's been an extreme burden placed on the parents, and they're trying to get back to normal working lives while they're having to take over additional roles of being, uh, teachers and tech support for the children that are also doing remote education, things like that. Our occupancy-related restrictions here have placed additional discomforts on these parents and children, as they're now forced to stand outside of the business for hours on end, waiting for their turn to come in. And we all know the weather here. It's either 100 degrees out, 1,000% humidity, or it's pouring rain like it just happened to everyone earlier today, and we all lost power all over. We've tried to do everything we can for these parents to be able to see their children participate in a comfortable environment, but due to our, the occupancy restrictions, they're not allowed to be in the building because we'd be past our occupancy. So there's that. Also, along with the mask mandates, I am begging you to please lift the mandate, allow people to be free, and if they choose to wear their mask or any of their other personal protective gear, that is fine, and we welcome that, but there, it's not good for these kids. These mandates scare the general public into shaming and attacking individuals who are not wearing masks, um, who are not forcing their children under 18, per the mandate, to wear masks.
Sir, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Virginia. I don't have a last name, so Virginia, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
You can hear me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Last name Frizzle, F-R-I-Z-Z-L-E. I'm in, um, Crown Drive in Pinellas County.
Thank you.
Um, I second all those calls. This was based back in June 23rd, under the test positive reached 12%, and that occupancy of intensive care unity, units and hospital beds had increased. But as round, we have 2,322 hospital beds, and there's 838 available. 40% of those are for children, 17% or more for adults. He doesn't, so this does not qualify anymore for when this was even started. We know the numbers have been down. Um, Florida Surgeon General Scott Rivkis said recently in September, "You may want to compromise, but this virus does not compromise. This virus is spread by the breath, and masks do not completely eliminate this virus." So you're, you're doing a false sense of security, and we're gonna talk about cloth masks in particular being dirty and not being changed, and the information that is medically coming up on this. I sent you the information, all the information of the contradictory of these cloth masks and their effectiveness, not being effective, and how dirty they can be and cause more disease. Kids can get sick. You're gonna make more people sick. You're gonna make more people sick. Recently, CDC is allowing HCQ to be, hydrochloric acid can be used in the hospitals. We have medicine that works, and it is in the CDC. It's there, and Dr. Cho knows it. It is there now. It's recently written in there that they're allowed to use it. The physicians are allowed to use it. Touching our mouths, and they're getting wet, and they're putting their masks on, is gonna cause more disease. Dr. Cho, you know this.
Ms. Frizzle, your time has expired, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Gabriella. I don't have a last name, so Gabriella, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Um, yes, um, I'm totally against the mask mandate. Everyone should be and have the ability to do whatever they feel is proper for them. That is our Fourth Amendment. We would like to see what constitutes a state of emergency in your minds, and we would like to see the data that has caused you to put these mandates in, in use at this time. Also, I think the Rise and Shine mandate is absolutely disgusting. You are looking to keep people away, away from our area. Who would want to come here and wear a mask when they're at the beach? I am totally appalled. I have, I have been a resident of this county for 38 years. I have never, ever, ever seen anything so disgusting. Please give us our rights back, and I don't know who is paying you all off in order to make these decisions and make the people live by them. You are no better than anybody else. Thank you.
Gabriella, for the record, can we have your last name and, and address?
Sure, I'm Barbara E. Owen. I live in Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Ashley Gass. Uh, Ashley, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, I'm Ashley Gass. I'm an exercise physiologist in Clearwater.
Thank you.
I've been here for a decade, and, uh, I'm completely opposed to this mask mandate, and your mask propaganda is a joke. It's inappropriate at best. Over the last few months, we've been seeing all the data manipulation, false positives, to name but a few. Not only have we flattened the curve, we've flattened a lot of other things. In the last seven days alone, we've had a drop of 19.5% in cases, 25.64% in deaths, with a seven-day rolling average declining another 19.5%. We are now at a mortality rate of 1.8%, which rivals three 29 numbers. You're violating our rights. The group is growing. That is against this. We are speaking out. I do not wear masks anywhere, and I will continue to do so, and the group is growing. If people want to wear masks in public, that's their choice. And if we're well, and we choose not to, that should also be our choice. What is your end game here? How low do we need to go? I'd like to know that. What's this end game? None of us can figure it out. The data doesn't support anything that you're doing. We are not in a state of emergency, and that has been clear for quite a while now. So I ask, please, that you remove this mask mandate, take the wraps off the bus, they're ridiculous, and remove our state of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Barbara Walker. Uh, Barbara, if you go ahead and mute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, we'll have two minutes with the board.
Hello, this is Barbara Walker, 3019 Bradford Circle in Palm Harbor, and I was just giving you a quick call tonight to say that I'm, uh, still supporting the commission's good work in listening to sound science and experts. Um, I hope that you will be extending the local state of emergency and the mask mandate until we are through this, and we are not through this. It's kind of, we might have plateaued, but we're not done yet. So, um, just wanted to call in support of, you know, all of you this evening, and I'm sorry, I know this has been, been clearly a very hard meeting. The public's discourse has even upset me, so I hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is John Anderson. Uh, John, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address, for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Anderson, J-O-H-N, and E-R-S-O-N, 10402 Valencia Road, Seminole. Yeah, you guys are taking a beating tonight. It's gotta be tough. But I would like to thank Councilwoman Peters, Councilwoman, sorry, Peters, and Councilwoman Eggers for actually responding to an email that I sent June 30. Uh, I know emails sometimes get lost, so I will resend this to all of you. Um, but now that I have your attention, Councilman's Long, Gerard Justice, Seal, and Welch, I'd just like to read to you the last paragraph of my email. This is from June 30th. "After just one week, the ordinance is producing nothing but fear and animosity out in the community. Many businesses, employees, and customers have obviously not read the full text and are operating on the false understanding that everyone must wear a mask, no exceptions. This ordinance has created an us-versus-them, masks-versus-no-masks dynamic that is dangerous and must not be allowed to continue. Please revoke this ordinance and restore the positive friendly attitude that used to characterize Pinellas County. Please act with all haste." Now, I received responses from the staff of two commissioners, and I appreciate that. I know you guys are busy. I'll forward this to you again. I'd appreciate, um, knowing that you're hearing this comment, knowing that you're seeing the effect of what's going on in our county. Also, uh, one of the responses I got, uh, to an email a, a week earlier was that you would do marketing. Uh, the bus wrap marketing is not really letting people know that there are exceptions to the ordinance. Uh, somebody had to create a third-party website, pinellisfreedom.com. There you can go and find the full text of the ordinance. It is very clear what the ordinance says. Uh, by the way, the frequently asked questions on the county website is actually very misleading, uh, and it's not doing its job. People out there still don't know that there are people who have-
Your time has expired, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have nine remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker, I don't have a first name and last name, Mac. Uh, if you can go ahead and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, this is Susan Mac from North Reddington Beach.
Thank you.
Um, I would first like to take a brief pause to recognize and remember tomorrow's 19th anniversary of 9/11. Thank you. I will keep this simple and not spout off the numbers we can all see on the dashboard, the numbers that do not warrant the continuation of the mask ordinance. I'm not sure if it's incompetence on the board's part, or fear of being wrong, but at some point, you all must answer our questions. You have yet to tell us the parameters for implementing or ending the forced mask ordinance in this county. We have been asking for these parameters for two months. Hopefully, our governor's request, due in five days, will force your hand. I hope you are not taking it as lightly as Mr. Burton's quote in the Tampa Bay Times indicated on Friday, and will provide the governor and us with factual information and plans for termination of this ordinance. As Rob stated earlier this afternoon, there was a county organizational chart. He was also correct in stating the citizens are at the top of that chart. It's time to listen to your constituents, your elected officials, and you are supposed to be representing all of us, not those, not just those you mandate into submission or that agree with your views. You should be doing your due diligence, your salaries warrant, and stop paying, following the leader. Are you so inept that you can only make decisions based on what other counties do, or what your political cronies are doing, or based only on what Dr. Cho advises? Rather than making informed decisions on data and opinions from people that, for lack of a better term, have no skin in the game? Dr. Cho's department received nearly $60 million from you. Trust me, you say jump, he will say how high. With that being said, a growing number of us have realized this is much more than a mask ordinance.
Ms. Mac, your time has expired, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Carrie. I don't have a last name, so Carrie, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board. Carrie, can you hear me? Carrie, I see you're unmuted, but I, I'm not hearing any audio coming out. You might have the wrong audio source selected.
Hello, can you hear me now?
That's better. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I ask you tonight to remove the mask mandate.
Carrie, real quick, can I have your, uh, your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Dixie Ross. I'm in Dunedin.
Thank you.
Okay. So I ask you tonight to remove the mask mandate. According to the FDA, face masks, when intended for medical purpose such as source control, including use related to COVID-19, that surgical masks are medical devices. The Florida Constitution, Article 1, Section 23, states that a competent individual has the right to refuse medical treatment. It's a law, unlike your mandate, that you cannot force an individual to wear a medical device. Wearing a mask should be a choice that the residents of Pinellas County can make on their own. We are down under 3,000 current hospitalized COVID patients in all of Florida. My question to you is, what will it take to remove the mandate? Please remember, the job of the government is to protect the freedom of the citizens, not to try to protect us from the virus and take our medical freedoms away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have seven speakers remaining. Our next speaker is Jess Gilli. Ms. Gilli, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Good evening, county commissioners, and this is the Pinellas County. I'm a co-founder of Pinellas County Watch and you've heard from several of our members this evening. We are growing, we are organizing, and we are done being silent. And we are done with ceding our personal liberties. We're here, we're not going away. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Ms. Gilli, can we get your address and spelling for the record, please?
Jessica, J E S S I C A, Gilli, G I L L E Y, and I'm in unincorporated Pinellas.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, our next speaker is Don Bowler. Don, welcome back to the commission. If you'll go ahead and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, first I have a question. May I ask a question that is unrelated to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, you can, sure.
Okay, thank you. We've lived in our house for thirteen years. When we first moved in here, it was kind of relatively quiet when it comes to traffic. We've since had a Circle K built on the opposite side of the street of us and we're getting ready to, oh, by the way, DOH L E R, I live in St. Pete. We're also, they're also in the works of building a Wawa's right on the corner of Fifty-fourth Avenue and Sixty-sixth Street. We, it's a, it's a four-lane road with the middle lane with no median. We have had the roads surveyed, people come out and look and they don't warrant putting a median in here. Over the years, we've had a lot of car accidents. My daughter and myself were almost in a head-on collision because of the Circle K. Part of the parking or the entrance exit, there is a no-left-turn sign, but people don't abide by it. Do you guys have jurisdiction over the road people to where maybe we could get another opinion to try to make this safer for us as, there's only myself and my neighbor. We're the only two houses in this area and it scares the life out of us trying to get out of our houses to go take our kids to school and whatnot. So I was just wondering if you guys have any oversight over what they do with the roads? If, like, I call one of you guys, like, in the next couple of days or something, to see if we can try to get something changed out here where I live? So that's my question.
I'll respond. We took down her name and number. It depends on whose jurisdiction it is.
We're unincorporated St. Petersburg.
But it depends whether it's a state road or whether it's a county road, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
It depends on whether it's a county road or a state road and there's all kinds of standards they use to make those determinations. We'll follow, I'll have staff follow up with you directly.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Megan. I don't have a last name. So Megan, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Megan Panic and you spell panic P A N E K.
Thank you.
And I live in Clearwater. I've lived here for about twenty years. But basically, I'm calling because I also oppose the mask mandate. I understand that you are doing your best to attempt to manage coronavirus, but truly, we're at a point now where we don't need micromanagement of the citizens. It's pretty well under control. And I have a family member who actually even got coronavirus and they wore a mask and gloves everywhere they went and disinfected their shoes everywhere they went, took every precaution and still got it. But then I have another person who has a kid who is forced to wear a mask at school now and ended up in the hospital this week because of carbon dioxide poisoning. So the masks are being harmful and they're not actually protecting people against the virus in any way, as far as I can tell, because my elderly relative actually got it while wearing a mask and gloves and disinfecting everywhere she went. So I would just really like my freedoms back and my family's freedoms back and I don't want kids getting sick from carbon dioxide poisoning. And I just think you guys really need to look at what everybody wants and not totalitarian-type mandates on people when it's really no longer necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four speakers remaining. Our next speaker is Courtney. Courtney, I don't have your last name, so if you'll go ahead and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Courtney Schroeder. That is S D H R O E D E R. We live in Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
I just want to speak out and say I, as well, am amongst the consensus tonight. I am against this mask mandate. I am tired of hearing my children come home and cry in the evenings because they have had to wear the masks all day long. My children do not have the benefit of doing homeschooling or virtual schooling. I did have to send them back. We have a small family on business. So I can't babysit my kids during the day. I am forced to send my kids back into an environment that I am not comfortable with. I had to pick up my children on Friday early for a special occasion. I am a victim of something I'd rather, obviously, not mention in my past, but I cannot wear a face mask. I do not wear a face mask. And I was forced to put one on just to walk into the school to sign a stupid piece of paper saying I'm their mother and I'm checking them out. I nearly had a panic attack, asked if I could stay outside. I'm just, I'm ready for this to be over. I would like for it to be optional if someone chooses to do so, to wear a mask. I think that should be their choosing. But like many of us have said, we just want our liberties back. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Kristy Alvarez. Ms. Alvarez, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Yeah, my name is Kristy Alvarez. I live in Seminole, Florida. Last name spelling is A L V A R E Z. I'm going to keep this short. I just have three points. First of all, I want to give a shout out to all of the Pinellas County Watch members who called in tonight. I love you all. I am also a co-founder of this group. I feel like you need to make masks optional and the mandate. We do not want your overreach anymore. We're sick of it. And as much as Commissioner Gerard doesn't want to hear it, we are all for Tammy Vasquez and Larry Ahern for Pinellas County Commissioners come November. Thank you. Have a great day.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is on the phone line, last four digits, five three seven five. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
You already spoke. I believe that was Kevin Keneely.
Correct, yeah. Sorry, for some reason it put me in here twice. Thank you again for acknowledging me.
Thank you, sorry. And Madam Chair, with that, we have no other speakers that wish to be heard.
Okay, well, thank you all. Okay, while we're dealing with our local state of emergency, do we want to hear an update from our doctors?
Yes, we do have both Dr. Cho, Dr. Jamison on the line, extending the state of, this order would be from September the eleventh to September the eighteenth. I can just address, I mean, Dr. Cho can go over the numbers. We are seeing the trends go down, but we also know, as we stated last week, that not only do we have seventy thousand children and teachers going back to school, we're also seeing our universities open up and increased numbers of kids coming back from the university, being tested at our test sites, along, you know, with watching the fall trends. I've collaborated with our neighbors in both Pasco and Hillsborough County, talking about the data points that you've asked us to look at and we are looking at those and we'll bring that to you, but that's going to take time. We know that we need to watch this over the next two to three weeks to be able to see the trends and where, and what is occurring on the ground. Because at the same time, when we issued this back, at that time, we saw record numbers skyrocket and at both the July, the Memorial Day weekend, three weeks after that is when our began, our numbers began to rise. And then after the July Fourth weekend, we had the record-breaking numbers that you've seen. So we definitely see a trend from those big holiday weekends and the community spread along with the impact of both the university, kids back in schools and in general, the economy reopening back up, kids have got large gatherings. So we do recommend this. Dr. Cho and Dr. Jamison on the line, the sheriff could not make it tonight, but I can certainly answer any questions following their comments.
Well, I think we probably all follow the numbers on the website, but I'm wondering, have we, do we know what's going on in the schools? Because I haven't seen anything-
Well, Dr. Cho can certainly address that.
After that first week.
Yeah, Dr. Cho can certainly address that.
Sure, we've been working really closely with the school, the school boards. Our teams are working pretty closely together. If you, the, the Pinellas County School Board has put it on their webpage, numbers per schools as well as the numbers within those particular institutions. So you can sort of follow along that, but continue to work with them. The majority of what we've seen almost all have been bringing it into the, to the schools, bringing it into the schools. So I think it underscores the importance of really getting that messaging out. If you're not, if you're sick, if you have a test pending to stay at home and that bleeds to beyond the schools, I think we also see that in the workplace as well. So I think it's important. It's been a great working relationship with the school board and I think both the DOH and, and the school board continues to refine the process as well as the communication aspect of it.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Long.
Thank you. Dr. Cho, have you gotten any numbers from the school board about the numbers of, I seem to recall reading an article about entire classrooms that had been quarantined. Was that here in Pinellas County? I was having a difficult time.
It goes in hand in hand with sort of the epidemiologic investigation that, that it's, so with the Epi investigation and the contact tracing aspect, it entails getting the appropriate information, making sure it's reliable and timely, making sure in a, in the setting of a school, making sure that there's an accurate seating chart as well. So if there is, there is some concerns, there are inconsistent sort of information that's given, then we would err on the side of caution at, in those instances and exclude classrooms. But again, again, with, with what we've done over the last two weeks, continuing to refine that process, getting that information. And I think what we're working towards is trying to refine it and trying to be more precise as much as we can with the information that we have.
So as a follow-up, Madam Chair, if I may, is it possible, Dr. Cho, that you could come back to us at our next meeting with some updates on what the situation is like with regard to quarantines and whether or not any of the, how many kids or families or whatever are affected by having their children have to leave school?
The, the only thing with the numbers and the quarantines, generally, we do not share specifics. And you've seen, heard me say this, even with the long-term care facilities, the specifics and the quarantine numbers and stuff like that. But the school in itself has opted to put some of that information out there on their webpage and you can follow it through that. I can give you some of the, the processes in which we can determine quarantine or how we've sort of refined it, the process a little bit better.
Okay, but I would think that we would need some additional data as we go forward to determine whether if there is a spike, there is not a spike, how many people are affected or, I don't know, what are you thinking, Barry?
Well, we're going to watch exactly what occurs within the schools and we'll rely upon Dr. Cho and Dr. Greco and to provide that input and advice as we make recommendations to you going forward. This is different than what's occurring in other places. You know, our discussion last week is what are happening in the twenty-one counties that have mask mandates versus those that are, that don't. We're looking at that. So we have our data team that's made up of professionals within the counties, the county departments, Dr. Cho's team and others looking exactly at that type of data, to see if there's trends and there's a difference, you know, within, within those areas. That's going to take a little time, but we are actively pursuing exactly that type of data to inform you as you try to make decisions, you know, in the future.
And as we're looking at that data, can we make sure we're looking at the relative densities of the different counties? I mean, we have counties in the state that have less people in them than Dunedin.
There's, there's no question. It's urban areas and hence the twenty-one counties that have mask mandates are largely the urban areas. Yes, there's a few, as, as colleagues have pointed out. And so we'll differentiate that, but we're absolutely looking at that. But also talking to our peers about the type of data that they're looking and trying to make these decisions also.
Okay, and as we're talking about, yes, Commissioner Eggers.
You know, we, we've been, obviously, at this a long time. It feels like years and it's been months and our residents, you know, I'm sure going through the same thing. We've had lots of conversation. About a month ago, you started asking about, you know, what's it going to take for each of us individually as commissioners to make decisions that go the opposite direction? And I'm not, I'm not asking for that from you all tonight or anything. I'm just saying that the last fourteen days at least, if not twenty-one days, maybe twenty-eight days, I don't have that information on the site, the percent positive have all been below four percent. Some have been in the twos, a couple in the ones, a lot in the threes and twos and all of them before, below four percent. Testing is down. That means less people probably feel that they have to get tested. I'm not sure. We still have the accessibility to it. You know, numbers in hospitals are down, which, again, this is part of my rationale for thinking about masks or not masks. The COVID facilities have capacity. The long-term care facilities are improving. And again, I just think that there is that disconnect from where we are and where things are and what it will take to finish off that, the mask ordinance itself. Because that seems to be the whole, you know, the lightning rod for this whole conversation that we're going through. So as I said a week ago or two weeks ago, if we take, stop the mask mandate tonight, the efforts don't change tomorrow. The questions that are in play don't change. The ebb and flow of the numbers, the ebb and flow of the percent positives and the beds and all of that will go up and down, up and down. Again, I think people are learning more and more how to deal with this, this disease. Now, having said all of that, there's still, there's still some, some areas of concern. I get that. But we're not going to eliminate those concerns. We're not going to get rid of all of them. So I think the, it's going to be, I'm getting to a point where I'm thinking we get rid of the masks. I'm not opposed to putting them back in place if we see numbers going the other way again. And I'm not saying that's what we want to do again, but at some point, we can't say, well, I'm not prepared to say that I'm waiting two years or a year and a half or a year before we get the vaccine, before we do this. I was alarmed by the numbers in June, concerned about the hype, high numbers in early July as they started to come down. And I think it did have something to do with our residents taking things more seriously and taking actions themselves to be more careful. I think that's the primary thing. We had, obviously, the mask ordinance. We had the bars and the, in the nightclubs and all of that. And, and so I think those things are all, are all part of the reasons that we started to come down. Now, I think we're still in phase two. Barry, I'm just, I kind of lose sight of it, but phase, I'm talking about from a state standpoint, phase two, we're not even into phase three yet. Is that correct?
That is correct. I understand. I just got a text that said that the governor said allow bars to open up at fifty percent, though.
Say that again?
I just received a text that said that the governor just issued an order that would allow bars to open up at fifty percent. So that would be a new, it's, that's, it's a modified phase two.
Okay, it's still, it's still facing, so again, from my perspective, I think the numbers are pretty, in pretty, we're in pretty good shape with our numbers. I'd like to see that, you know, that, that phase two go to phase three and then I think we ought to seriously consider rescinding the mask order. I mean, it's, again, I'm talking about my perspective. I'm not waiting in my mind for a vaccine. Now, if the numbers are going up and out of control like they were before, I'm all for putting the mask mandate as part of the tools to fight this back, back in place. But, I mean, I just think at some point, you know, and again, I, you know, I, I listen to the doctors, I read other stuff, you know, other doctor reports and I feel like everybody has their heart in the right place. But I, I'm just going to keep challenging because I, you know- But I, I'm just gonna keep challenging because I, you know, I want people to keep talking me, you know, we're not ready yet, we're not ready. Well, show me and tell me how. Is, the numbers are being, are very reflective and they continue to show good, good data. So again, I just, just some comments and thoughts for tonight. But I'd like to see, you know, the, the numbers, the phase three be obvious. So that we, you know, the governor is looking at those, at that, at our situation, saying, good, we're ready to go. Phase three is here. The numbers are down, you know, and we're moving forward. But I don't know that that's the case yet. So anyway, just, just some comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to go over a couple of data points. And thanks to all the folks that call in. And I just want to assure them that we are listening. But there are some data points that we disagree on. Doesn't mean that we're not listening. One of the issues we hear about is the impact on businesses. And Commissioner Eggers just hit on the phase two. We are under the state's guidelines for business capacity. Correct, Barry? Are there any restrictions we have over and above what the state has?
We have two restrictions above the state's phase two requirements. One is the mask mandate for indoor locations. And two is that you have to be seated at a bar to be served. And the, that is the, are the only two things that the Board of Commissioners control. The schools are separate and the capacity limitations are part of the governor's phase two order. And those are a state order.
Okay. And the notion that this is political is just, is ridiculous. I'm sorry. None of us had on our calendars this year that we were going to implement a mask ordinance. We get no benefit from this other than protecting public health. And that's the reason that we implemented the mandate. So I want to get back to the facts. And to Dr. Cho and Jameson, we, we hear in the eight o'clock calls, your discussion along with the sheriff and others about this. But in your opinion, school, schools went back on the 24th of August. And tomorrow will be the third week since about ballpark, 50,000 students and 20,000 staff went back. And our concern was to see if there was community spread that came from that. And so since that was three weeks ago, how much longer would be a reasonable time to know whether there's been an impact in community spread from students returning to school? Are we talking another week, another two weeks? What's your estimate on that?
I think there's not any exact science to this, but I, we have not completed the third week. As I think Friday tomorrow will be the third week. I think we may probably have a better idea by next week. There's a, there's obviously a few things that were trending and overall the numbers have improved. But the only thing that I've sort of noticed over the past seven days is our rolling, a seven day rolling average for the percent positivity was as low as 2.6% last week. It, it has plateaued and ticked up very slightly. It is 3.1% today. It could be just a blip and it could go down again. And I hope that's the case. But, but if it continues to increase, it is, can be a little concerning. Additionally, what the testing sites are reporting now is that we are getting more of the younger adults coming in, not necessarily the schools, but maybe the colleges or those that may be home from the colleges, is what they reported out on our last community testing work group from our community sites. So obviously another population subset that we're monitoring as well. But, but in terms of the, the remainder of the numbers, I think we sort of discussed this. They, they have improved the hospital capacity is doing well. The COVID occupied patients and beds, ICU invents are in pretty good, pretty low at this point.
And so another week or so and we'll have a better idea whether the schools have indeed opened re-safely. Open safely and then we can look at the next step. At least if I'm still here, I've got another month and a half. That's where my thinking will be. But we have made progress. And I think the progress we made is precisely because of the masks and because of the social distancing. And so we have to be very careful in undoing the very thing, the very actions that put us in a good position, in my opinion. Just a couple of other comments. You know, just some things that were stated just are not true. And we're just gonna disagree on the facts with some of the callers. One statement with that, this is no more serious than the flu. That is just incorrect. That it's only affecting the, the severe or seriously ill. I can tell you, I've got a lifelong friend who's younger than me and better shape than me, an ex-law enforcement officer, and he's been on a ventilator for weeks. His life has changed forever. I, I've had a deacon at my church pass away. So this is not something that's just like the flu. And people all over this county can, can relate the same kind of experiences. The issue of if people want to wear a mask in public, it's their choice. That's a fundamental issue. If you don't wear a mask, you are endangering others if you are asymptomatic. It, it's not like if you're riding down the street on a motorcycle with no helmet, you're basically endangering yourself. But when you don't wear the mask, you don't have the symptoms and you're carrying this virus, then you are in fact endangering other people. And that's not a right that anyone has. And finally, there's this tone and, and I've heard it many times. I've heard it on fluoride, I've heard it on term limits. This attempt to politicize this and threaten folks at the ballot box. We represent all of the people and only a tiny fraction of the people in this county of a million people get a chance to call in. And so we have to keep that in mind, that even if there are 50 callers, there are a lot, a lot more folks out there that don't get a chance to call in. And we are responsible for doing the right thing for all of those folks. The last thing I'll speak to is a rise and shine campaign. The way that we build back our tourism-based economy is to make sure that folks feel safe coming here. And as, as a Harley rider, and Barry, we got to get you on a true motorcycle, a Harley, not what you're riding.
Oh, I don't say that.
You look, you look at what happened in Sturgis and how that was a super spreader event. That, that's exactly what we don't want to happen as Pinellas County reopens our community for visitors. And so we are listening. We're gonna disagree on some facts, but I think we're on the right path. I do see a way, if, if the numbers remain good, that we can look at the mask ordinance, in my view, in a couple of weeks. But we need to see what that impact is from the schools reopening with the flu season and with other things. But we're on a good path. We are listening, but I for one, am not gonna be bullied or threatened into making a decision that I'm not comfortable with. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very well said, Commissioner Welch. I couldn't agree with you more. I seem to recall in a meeting that we had, I don't think it was last week. I think maybe it was the week before. We had somewhat of an extended conversation about this.
I think we lost Commissioner Long. Commissioner Long, you're, you're, yeah, your internet keeps cutting in and out.
I'm so sorry, we had a power outage and the internet's been wacky ever since. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I did, I'll be quick. I do believe that we decided at the end of this month that we would revisit the mandatory mask issue because we did want to wait and see what the result of the kids and the administrators go. A little concerned about whether or not there would be a spike after the Labor Day weekend when there were so many people to eat and to be. And so seems to me that that's a perfect.
Madam Chair, I'll try to get BTS to reach out. I think that she's.
Okay. Sorry. Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions for Dr. Cho and for Barry. Barry, will you explain for the callers exactly what the emergency order is and why you need it?
Okay, so there's, the emergency order simply allows us, under a state of emergency, to build back costs associated with responding to the pandemic, to FEMA. So this is federal reimbursement of dollars. So that's staff time spent outside of their normal job. We're able to get reimbursed for that. We've purchased, outside of the money that we got from CARES Act, a lot of PPE for nursing homes, for hospitals and for the public that, that in fact we can now be reimbursed for. So this allows us to make emergency purchases and be eligible for reimbursement for costs associated with response.
Okay, and are we still, is there still a high demand? Or just like in our calls, we've lowered those calls down as the demand got down? And have we got enough in storage that we're not ordering more? Because with the numbers going down for about five or six weeks now, they've been under five, I think. Do we have, I mean, are we actively purchasing? Are we actively doing anything? I know when a hurricane is over, even though the emergency order is rescinded, you can still get reimbursements. So I don't think you need the, that's unclarification. Is do you need the emergency order active to get those reimbursements? Because I know with hurricanes, we don't. Right?
We still need, we still need an active or, an active emergency order to be able to get reimbursed for FEMA for the cost, for the staff time costs associated with responding to the pandemic. Now, you're correct in terms of the purchases. We are keeping a 90-day supply of PPE that we, it's, that's a fluid. So as there, our numbers go down and as our, our demand from, for instance, our nursing home goes down, then we don't purchase more PPE. But we all, we have tried to keep a rolling stock of what has traditionally been a 90-day supply to where we're prepared.
Okay, all right, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. And, um, Dr. Cho, I, and I may be going down the wrong path in this, but I want you to help me out with it. And maybe Dr. Jameson, you know better because you're in the hospitals. But isn't one of the treatments when someone has COVID that comes into the hospital, if it's not so severe, that one of the treatments is massive vitamin C?
So I can try to answer a little bit of that. And then maybe Dr. Cho, as an infectious disease specialist, could answer that as well. But vitamin C is something that's been talked about and infectious, treating people with infections for quite some time. Been studied extensively. And in some institutions, it is part of the protocol that they will use for somebody who has a very severe infection, something we refer to as sepsis. But to the best of my knowledge, it's not being used for milder cases or for that type of thing.
And I, I have to concur with that. From what I've seen and what I've read, there's been a lot of talk as it pertains to vitamin C, vitamin D and zinc as potential sort of adjuvant sort of therapies. In terms of vitamin C, the studies I've seen, they look at the, it was retrospective studies. It was pretty high dose of IV vitamin C as part of the protocols. And it's probable that some of the hospitals do use it, but it's not done universally. And of the, of the, some of the vitamins and minerals that are sort of listed, vitamin D seems to have actually some of the better data. There was a recently, I think a JAMA retrospective study that does show that those that are, and again, there's limitations in the study, but those that had a normal or close to normal vitamin D levels had a less of a risk of, of acquiring COVID by about 1.8 times.
Okay, so the reason I'm bringing this up is, I know, I don't know very many people that have had COVID, but the few that I do know, all but one got the IV high concentration of vitamin C. And when I spoke to my doctor about it, and that's her recommendation to all her patients, is that we get high doses of vitamin C. I know when I travel, I get an IV bag of high doses of vitamin C so that if I get on a plane, I'm not so concerned. And it was based on the study that viruses don't like vitamin C. It's a toxic substance for a virus that doesn't survive well. So I guess the question, or where I'm going with this, or the rabbit hole I'm going down is, when we talk about prevention, I mean, that's what we want to do is prevent, right? And we did the whole mask thing for prevention. And I know we're doing a prevention ad on washing your hands, washing your mask because it's critically important you don't wear a dirty mask and you don't wear a wet mask. I don't think we, we still don't, you know, let that out enough. And some of the callers have been bringing it up because it is dangerous. It says on the OSHA website, the C website, that it is dangerous if you wear a wet mask. So, so I guess where I'm going is, why, why are we not? And if you say vitamin D has more numbers that say so, why, why isn't that part of the prevention? Why aren't we encouraging people to take, you know, 4,000 units of vitamin C a day and 10,000 units of vitamin three and maybe a zinc tablet a day? We know zinc will slow down a lot of the symptoms with the COVID, that's a cold. So there's plenty of research on that one. So, and you know, so that's just kind of my question is, if, if we're gonna do prevention, why are we limiting our prevention to a mask and not limiting it to other vitamins and minerals that definitely can strengthen the immune system? Question for you, Dr. Cho.
So no, that's a fair sort of question. The, in terms of the vitamin, the only thing is the, the studies have been concrete. I, I think some of the recommendations across various medical sort of organizations and associations have been a little bit variable. And so something like that, I would defer potentially to your personal physicians. And I know one of the callers, there's a, beyond the standard messaging, the social distancing, the masks, the hand washing, there are other things. I know one of the callers do, did bring this up. One of the risk factors for severe disease for COVID is these chronic health conditions. So making sure those are appropriately addressed. Obesity is actually a huge risk factor for severe outcomes. So doing those basic things like watching your diet and exercise. And then for the chronic disease, making sure that you go to see a physician on a regular basis. Smoking, even vaping has been associated with higher transmissibility as well as complications. So, so if you are addicted, then this might be the time. And then, and then other things, I think that's important. I keep pushing sort of the flu shots. And I think it's important this year more than any other year because of the similarities of the symptoms.
And, and that makes great sense. So I guess the rabbit hole I'm going down is maybe the county and the health department can work together and, and, and expanding our, our prevention messages beyond masks. Because I think it goes way beyond masks. And then, and clearly the study that came out that said only 6% of the population that died, died from COVID. And the other 94% died from other health issues. So, so I get where they're coming from and why they're upset with this and the comorbidity is a problem. But if you're healthy and you've got a strong immune system and, and if those vitamin supplements, the minerals, if they make a difference, why, why isn't that part of our social media? Why is that not part of our campaign on prevention? And so I just want to throw that out there. I would like to see that be part of that. You know, I think when you're taking better health, whether it's just popping those vitamins or minerals, maybe it just generates some more of that, get out and exercise, get out and do some other things. And I think we kind of hit the short end of that. I think we focused on, on washing hands and wearing a mask and six feet apart, but we didn't go into the other health factors that would protect someone, whether they're healthy or not. And so I, I think that we really missed the boat on that and we should fix that. I know Barry, you said you want to wait three weeks for the Labor Day, but I'll tell you, in my opinion, going back to school, sending that many children into school and that many teachers into a school and administrators and so forth, I think that's gonna have a bigger impact than Labor Day is going to. I could be wrong and you might be, let's say I told you so. But, but I think that was our next threshold. And, and two meetings in a row, I've asked for an end date. You've had callers ask for an end date, a clear defined end date. And we've had a long number of weeks that we have had low numbers. And I think it's wonderful. And I will absolutely state out loud, this virus is a very dangerous virus. It's, it's not like something we've seen before. It's a vascular virus more than a respiratory virus and that's why it's so dangerous. And I do believe that people need to be proactive, to be healthy and all that kind of stuff. But I also think that when we did this, we did a emergency order to get the numbers down, to flatten the curve and to make sure our hospitals have the, the resources that they need and everything on the PPE that we needed. And, and so I'm getting the feeling, just like our callers, that we're, that we're there, that, that we flattened the curve. We did that. I believe our hospitals are much more prepared. They now know in the second wave that we have, they now know it's more vascular than respiratory. They now know the, the ventilator doesn't work like a, like a, the other machines that the other hospital has, the ECMO machines. You know, we, we know so much more now, but they're prepared. And we have the reservoir, we have the medication. There is no shortage for the medication. So I think the hospitals are quite prepared and, and the hospitals are always gonna mandate a mask as long as this virus is around, as many businesses would still mandate a mask. But I think it's time that we give the public a general idea on an end date. And, and we are now, almost tomorrow is the third week of school. And I expected, and I said it in several meetings, that I expected within two to three weeks to see a huge spike because the kids going back to school. And we just haven't seen it. We're seeing a slow uptick, but we're not seeing that huge spike. I expected. And so I, Barry, I really do think that the public deserves, I'm gonna say it again for the third week in a row, they deserve an end date. And, and I'm. they deserve an end date. And, and I'm at the point like Dave, that, you know, it may be next week, in my opinion, if this numbers don't come up from school and you're several weeks out of Labor Day, I don't think there's a reason to be doing this. And I think that we go on the prevention, social marketing campaign about this vitamins and supplement that you should be taking, about the regular exercise that you should be taking. And if you think you have diabetes, you know, make sure you're going to your doctors and you're taking care of yourself. Um, I think that's a much more, um, proactive approach. Um, I, I will agree with the campaign, I, I, you know, showing kids and people in kayaks and on paddle boards. When it is very clear on the OSHA website that if a mask is wet, it's dangerous, that if they're showing people outside in the sun on a water and they're wearing a mask on the water, knowing that if it gets wet and they still wear it is very, very dangerous. And that is science. That is not made up. That is absolute science. I'm sure OSHA has good scientists and I'm sure the CDC has good scientists. So I, I really do have a problem with those ads running around this county, showing people on the water, wearing a mask because of the fact that it is dangerous for the CO2. It's on the OSHA website. That is science. And the wet mask thing is a real deal. It's a real thing. And so I have problems with that. I, I think that's the wrong message that we're sending people because it doesn't prevent anything and it can put people at risk. So I, I think those ads absolutely should come down and they may need to go back to the drawing board and get an ad that is much more relevant and, and safer than, than that ad on water. Um, again, that, that is science. That's not something that's made up. So, so those are my thoughts. But I, I am, I'm, I'm prepared to have an end date. I, I would be prepared today to have an end date on that. But I think they deserve an end date and we have not presented them an end date. We have not told them what our expectations were. In the beginning, we said flatten the curve, protect the hospitals. We have done that and I think it's time.
Thank you. Commissioner Seal?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I want to concur with really almost everything that everyone has said as colleagues. And, um, I want to also echo Commissioner Welch in that we are listening. We are reading all of your emails. Um, it has been pretty overwhelming with the number of emails that we've been getting. Um, and we understand your concerns. We understand your, um, your need to have your individual freedom for sure. I mean, none of us would like to be putting this mandate into order or to be dealing with all of the COVID effects and, um, across Pinellas County and across this nation. So, um, I would concur that, um, we look towards either the next two to three weeks. But I would like, as already has been pointed out, that we have some concrete data under which we ask our doctors, Dr. Jameson and Dr. Cho and some of the other hospital docs to get together and basically have come up with a data set that would, they would feel comfortable with us sending the mask mandate. And that would give me a level of comfort from a public health standpoint to, um, have those criteria in place and that we've met those criteria. Um, I will repeat what I have said before. I talked with Dr. Grego. And I think the reason we're not seeing an increase in the schools is because they are requiring the children to wear masks that are attending the schools. And so, and the children have been, for the most part, from what we've heard, uh, very compliant. And they're using social distancing as much as they can and put a whole lot of very difficult criteria and methodology in place in the schools to keep our children safe. So I, even if we lift the mask ordinance, I'd be surprised if the schools will lift it. Um, again, it's the school board's decision to do that. Um, so that's where I'm at at the present time. And I again appreciate everyone's, um, input. Um, and then before I finish up, we really didn't hear too much from Dr. Jameson as to what you're seeing and experiencing, um, and what your thoughts are. Thank you.
Like I can certainly chime in a little bit if you'd like me to.
Yes.
So I think there's some, uh, very important, um, uh, concerns and issues that have been discussed, um, here tonight. And, um, a lot of which are very valid. Um, the discussion about prevention measures and how to, uh, avoid being at risk for more severe disease is incredibly important. Um, when we talk about underlying risk factors, I think, or people who have underlying medical illnesses, I think sometimes it escapes the fact, or the fact may escape people that if you have a little bit of high blood pressure and you take a medicine for that, that's an underlying condition and your risk is elevated. So you're a very healthy person, functioning fine in the community, but you are actually in that category. And some studies will show that, you know, you could have two to three times, uh, the odds of, of getting severe disease just because, uh, you have a little bit of, of high blood pressure that's treated. So I, I think, um, when we say that it's just, uh, older folks or folks with underlying, uh, diseases, sometimes we, we think of a different population than maybe that really is, particularly in our country, uh, with the level of some of those chronic diseases in our country. Um, so that's an incredibly important point and I certainly agree that, that we should focus more upon, you know, what can we do to, to have people promote being as healthy as possible and as resistant as possible uh, to having severe effects, uh, from the virus? That being said, you know, I, I think our job here, um, as, as advisors to you is to try to bring you the, the sum total of, of our interpretation of what's out there in the medical science world. As I mentioned before, there's, uh, a lot going on and a lot we don't know still. People will be studying this for decades, writing books about it, writing articles. I sent Dr. Cho and a study earlier today and said, I bet you this one will be on the syllabus of a public health class uh, a few years from now, uh, because I, I really do think we're learning a lot. Um, and, and I would just caution against certainty, um, saying for certain anything. Um, whether we expect to see something happen or don't expect to see it happen. None of, none of this has enough precedent for us to be quite that sure, uh, right now, what, what the future will hold for us. What I can say is the preponderance of the data, uh, studies, expert opinion out there, I, I think still supports that masks are a valuable tool in slowing and helping to prevent the spread of this virus. And I, I would be reluctant to say that we're at a point now, given that level of uncertainty, that, uh, moving back from those masks, which we seem, seem to think are valuable tool right now, uh, would be quite time for that yet. Um, there certainly may be a time for that and, and I hope, uh, like everybody else, I'm just as tired as dealing with this as everybody else is. And I fully understand the sentiments that we're hearing. Um, I wish it was over too. But for me, if the, if the choice is between putting on the mask, uh, and saving a life, I, I know what my choice is. Um, the, you know, and I do that every day when I go in to see patients in the hospital still. So every single patient I have a mask on. So, um, I, I wish I could have a more concrete answer for you. And I think these are all very, very valid, um, discussion points that, that I've heard tonight. And I actually am very encouraged by, by the discussion tonight. So that's, that's where I'm seeing things.
Thank you. Um, and I have to agree. I, I am ready to start talking about it, about rescinding the mask ordinance, but I think we have to be, like Dave said, I think we have to be ready to put it right back on if we're seeing negative effects of that. And I think, you know, we've, we've been, we've been seeing things decline for a long time now, but that doesn't mean it's gone. I mean, I think we all know people who have this disease, who are dealing with it right now, including our sheriff. Who, you know, that we have a responsibility. I'm willing to talk about it, but I think we have to be re- ready to act quickly if we take it off and something happens, because the last thing we want to do is, is to be shutting down businesses and telling people to stay in their homes 24/7. We don't want to go back there and that's where we were. So let's, let's not take away everything that we have that's managed to, to get some control over this. Uh, Commissioner Justice, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I won't belabor, we've, we've been talking about this for a while. I just wanted to kind of, uh, I think everyone made some good points. When I hit a couple of things, remind the public that it is the school board, uh, and the superintendent to make the decision as far as the policies that happen within our public schools. Um, so you may not like the decision we made, just make sure that you're angry at the right board for the right decision, uh, that you're, you're, uh, appealing on. I have not seen that ad, uh, yet on the, uh, with the, uh, kayakers, uh, with the mask or anything. Um, I think that the ad should be reflect what our policies are. But I know that I see ads for Key West and other destinations where it's the same type of thing. Uh, and there's an audience out there that wants to come, but wants to know that, that it's going to be safe to come, that the local environment, the local businesses, local government are taking the precautions, uh, necessary to keep everyone safe. So I, I think, like I said, I haven't seen the ad, so I can't speak to it, but, um, it, it should reflect what our actual policies are and those type of things. Um, everyone's ready for the masks to, to be done. Nobody, this is, um, and I would disagree, uh, with someone who said it's not political. I think this has become very political. I think it's been political for months, but not the way they're saying tonight. I think it's been political from other folks. Um, and so I think we want to be careful with that as well. As you heard, some of the callers tonight were very blatant politically. Um, I think the danger that we're putting Dr. Jameson, Dr. Cho in is we want this perfect graph. We want this X and Y chart of, okay, when X is 2.3 and Y is 1.4, then we're going to do, we're going to do Z motion. And I just think that we have to be really careful about how we evaluate the data that we get and, and we lock into a certain number or a certain thing, uh, that's going to force us to make a decision that maybe we're not ready to make. So I think we take all that information in as we've been doing, not necessarily listen to the loudest voices in the room on a particular night, take the expert data that we get and make the best decision possible, uh, for the people that we serve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Barry, I just want, I'll call on you in a second. Um, just wanted to ask if maybe Steve could take a look at where, at those ads that they're running. I think one of them is on the bus, the PSCA bus. Um, but I'm not sure where else they might be running those. I, I think it's pretty silly too.
We're, we're looking it up right now. I have not seen them, but, um, you're based on the comments, staff's looking at them while we're in our meeting here. And, um, yeah, it should, it should, I agree with you, Commissioner. It should accurately reflect the message we're trying to send. The message that, that they were sending is all the research for travel industry is people seeking out a place to travel is that they wanted to go to a place where they're safe. Uh, we don't want to convey the wrong message with somebody wearing a mask that is not, um, you know, out on a paddleboard or something like that. That's, that's not the message. I agree with that. So we're going to look at that and we'll take any corrective action we need to do. I do want to leave you on the last point. You talked about the data points. Um, for the public, we, we, Dr. Cho, Dr. Jameson, um, many other health professionals and, um, the sheriff and I meet and discuss daily, or it was daily, now it's down to a couple of times a week. And, um, to talk about the data and the, of where we're going with this, remember this, for two and a half months, we did not have a day greater than 30 cases in one day. Um, usually it hovered around 15 to 20. Um, now we're accepting 70 cases a day and that's at this lowest point here. We're averaging 68.8 cases that, uh, over a five day period right now. So we are seeing those trends, but just understand where we're at. Um, so, um, I, I hear everything the commissioner said tonight. We're continuing to look at this. You asked us to find that data set. Um, we're, we're trying to bring the preponderance of everything that we know and we see to make these recommendations. And there's a lot of thought, um, and consideration that goes into the recommendations we make. Um, and so we will do that. We will be ready for you in a couple of weeks, uh, to be able to have that time of discussion.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, um, a couple of things that have been said. Um, I think, you know, the campaign for nutrition wellness, I, I brought that up a month ago. I still don't hear, hear enough messaging on that. I think the ad is misleading to the policy that we have here in this county. And I totally agree with some of the comments that have been made by my colleagues and Barry, that if it, if, if we were mandating masks in public, huh, out, outside and things like that, it might be more reflective of our policy, but it's not. It's actually misleading and it's telling people that we're that, in their minds, that safe. And I, I don't disagree with that comment, but I, I think we have to be careful. I think we need to be campaigning for the flu shot right now. I don't know that I've seen enough of that. Um, I like, you know, Barry, you're coming back with the county comparisons. I think that's going to be important. So we can see what counties that didn't have masks and what, how, how that's, you know, compared to what we're doing. It's only one factor, but I think it's important. Um, and, um, and then the other thing is, is that again, I, you know, you're right, the numbers were a lot lower before. We're accepting higher numbers, but percent positives, we're in the one, two, two and a half, 3%. We're now in the two and a half, three, three and a half percent. So there's a lot more testing right now. You're going to get more people that test positive right now, but I think the percent positive has really come way down. I mean, and that to me has been a number that I've been looking at. Um, and, and you know, that, and that's a number that I've been told is an important number. So percent positive is important number and it is one that we're, we're tracking carefully because it kind of gets, it kind of cuts through a lot of the differences in the different areas. So that's all I have. I don't want to belabor any other points. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope my internet is working. I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that I agree with my colleagues. I especially like the idea that Commissioner Seal had about putting a little think tank together with the group she mentioned. Uh, although I would like to see us add Sheriff Walt Terry to that think tank group because given that he's been an actual victim of this virus and is on the recovering end, he could really learn some very interesting thoughts about it, I'm sure. So that's all I have to say. And I look forward to our conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I want to go back to the executive order. You said that there are two things that we were doing. And one of them was that you had to be seated at a bar. Well, now that the governor has changed that order and the bars are open and that's, he's kind of taken it to a whole noth- another level. Are we looking to change that about you have to be seated or are we looking to, uh, stay, stay where we are?
I would recommend we absolutely stay where we are. What we saw at Postcard Inn and down at the, um, I forget the other place was, you know, a hundred kids that met the capacity limits, but they were jammed up on a stage, right? Um, and, and getting away from the large crowds gathered together. It's an idea to allow people freedom to go out, um, but not congregate in large crowds around a bar.
So it was around a bar or a stage?
Well, either one. And we saw both. We saw down at the postcard inn, um, you know, uh, a mass crowds around the bar and not seated. That was the whole idea. The sheriff and I crafted that very specifically to address what was a real problem. Um, so.
Okay. Cause it's not, summer's over, Labor Day is done, college kids are back at school. Is it the same issue now as it would have been in the summer?
I can, I can discuss it with the sheriff. We can revisit it, but I, at this point, I see no purpose in, in removing.
I would like to have the conversation at our next meeting though, if you talk to the sheriff.
Well, I won't, I won't be here next week, but we can, I'll be here in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Welch?
So is the, I was just doing a search here on the order extending the state of local emergency. The, the bar seating issue is not in that document.
It, it's not, but they, we have to have an emergency order. Joel, correct me if I'm wrong. We have to have the emergency order in place for it to affect the order. Is that correct, Joel?
We, we do. And just to, just to, if I could just clarify one thing, I know that, that perhaps I'm stating the obvious. Perhaps I'm providing clarity. What you're voting on tonight is simply the extension of your local state of emergency. The man, the mandate as to face coverings and the restrictions that the county administrator just mentioned are part of your ordinance, which is separate and apart from the local state of emergency. Now, your ordinance is predicated upon that local state of emergency being in effect. So the two are related, but from a legal perspective, what you're speaking, what, what you will be voting on tonight is just that seven day extension.
Okay. And it's in a single ordinance for both the bar seating and the masks is the same ordinance?
That is correct. Both of those requirements are in the same ordinance. And perhaps I may be complicating things at this point, but I do want to also advise all of you, that ordinance was adopted on an emergency basis, given the conditions that were, uh, prevalent in the community at the time. So it was not noticed in accordance with normal ordinance procedures. However, to repeal that ordinance, you will need to advertise, uh, action on that ordinance. I do not believe from a legal perspective, repealing the ordinance could properly be done on an emergency basis. So it would have to be advertised for a minimum of 10 days, keeping in mind that we also have to get that advertisement placed in the Tampa Bay Times. Keeping in mind that we also have to get that advertisement placed in the Tampa Bay Times, and that process usually takes about two weeks. So you could not repeal that ordinance tonight if you wished to. It has not been properly advertised. But that is not what you're voting on.
Commissioner Justice?
Well, uh, Madam Attorney, you did complicate it more. Uh, and I. We can't repeal it, but it may expire if we don't take action. So that being said, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the extension.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any further comments? If not, all right.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, because that's the first time I've heard that comment made. And I'd like you to send us something tomorrow that it says it verbally so we can look at it. You're telling me it takes two weeks to make a notice for 10 days? Uh, how, when's the soonest, if we wanted to hear this and and consider this ordinance, when is the soonest that we could, we could hear that?
I, I would estimate two weeks because it has to be advertised a full 10 days in advance of the public hearing. And like I said, I would defer to um, court records, and I don't know if Jeanette could answer this. But I know that it takes a few days to get an ad placed to the Tampa Bay Times. And keep in mind, they're only publishing twice a week now, so that is another limiting factor. And, you know, as the county administrator speaks to, I think almost every week. Again, Commissioner Justice, you're correct. If you don't extend the local state of emergency, the ordinance expires. But if you don't extend it, you also lose all of the other things that the county administrator described earlier. That is unrelated to the mask ordinance or the provisions related to gathering in bars and restaurants.
Yeah, I was, I was not commenting on the uh, merit of doing so, just the oddness of the action.
And, and the reason when you all adopted the ordinance, that we tied it to the local state of emergency. Is we felt that that made your ordinance more legally defensible. You were adopting it on an emergency basis, again, to uh, take into account the conditions that were prevalent in the community at the time. Where we did have a, a spike in, in positive numbers. Um, so we tied it to the local state of emergency because we felt that would make it more legally defensible. And as you all know, there have been uh, challenges to many, many, many of the ordinances throughout the state. And we wanted to put you, we wanted to put Pinellas County in the best possible position to defend such a challenge. And also, as you know, we do have a lawsuit challenging the ordinance.
I would just like to make sure that we're set up so that if we want to consider it in the last week of September, like some of the conversations tonight. That we know when that has to be placed to make that happen. So I just want, not, we're not now, but just make sure that we have a clear indication of when that ad has to be placed. If, as we go through the next week or two, we can, you know, the, the ad gets placed, at some point it gets run. So if, if we get, in the next two weeks, things go crazy and go, the numbers go out of sight, we can pull. But at least we'll have it set and ready to go and in place. And so I just want to make sure that we have that clearly understood. So. Thank you.
Jeanette?
Um, I do have an update from board records. They say it's typically at least a week in advance of the 10 day deadline. So that they can get it to the Tampa Tribune or Tampa Bay Times.
So you're saying 17 days?
Yes, it's, it's typical. Now, whether that can be changed or anything, we can give them a call and see. You know, what kind of uh, options there might be, but that is the norm.
Okay.
So what is our last meeting of the month?
Twenty second of the month, and then October, the first is the next meeting after that.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm not, not trying to be cute with it, but you know, letting the, letting the emergency order expire so that that goes away. And recreating another emergency order, does that, you know, again, I, I, I just, I'm, I feel like I'm being, you know, hamstrung by some technical issues. That require 17 to 20 days. That's just, that's just, that's just out of, I mean, I can't understand it. I'm sorry. It's just, it's just unacceptable. And I, and there's got to be a way that we can advertise differently than having to know today for 17 days from now. I mean, that's part of the, that's part of what we're, we're wrestling with.
I'm sure the county attorney's office can look at just what you said, because that would um, in essence, have the order expire. Um, and then if you wanted to put that in place, the following meeting or almost immediately, you know, after that time. But then, then I'd have to just space out because we couldn't charge anything back during that time period.
I understand.
I think we would also probably want to get to, get with perhaps the budget office and some others that have handled FEMA claims in the past. And see what sort of risk could be presented from having a lapse. Um, again, I don't know whether your orders now relate back in time to any extent. We would need to look into that and want to be absolutely certain we don't put those things at risk. But just as a reminder, one of the reasons why we adopted this as an ordinance. And not as um, an order, but just under your general powers related to emergencies. Is so that we could impose a civil penalty and not a criminal penalty. So that was the reason why you, the board originally adopted this as an ordinance is to, to provide that as an option. Because I know that nobody, the sheriff included, I believe, really wanted to see criminal sanctions imposed. And this gave us the option to just simply issue a citation. And frankly, I'm not sure if that's even been done.
There hasn't. Um, but we will look, given the comments tonight and the timing. For when you want to have these deliberations and the advertisement notice, we'll look at that. Um, and be able to give it, Joe will give you a report next week on it.
I mean, we could schedule it now for either the first or the sixth. Right?
That's correct.
And if we don't want to move forward, but people think we're voting on this every week anyway. So um.
We could go ahead and advertise, and that way you're, you have it in place and, and you're not required to act on it. Um, but that would at least meet the note.
We can always pull it, right?
Yeah, but. You can always pull it if you choose not to move forward, but you cannot move forward without it.
Right, so I think we may as well advertise. That we're gonna take it up. Either the first or, or our regular meeting on the sixth. Right, that's a regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll put it on for October the first. Advertise it, and that way we meet that threshold.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Justice?
Did you just groan?
Yes. Yes, as a matter of fact, I did.
That's, that's the reaction I get at home. I, I didn't expect it here. Um. I, I, I think procedurally, that's absolutely fine. If that's what you want to do, that's, that's absolutely fine. But you've just created the expectation and, and know that that's going to be coming for the next 20 some odd days, so. My two cents.
Well, again, they think we're voting on this every week anyway. Uh, Commissioner Welch?
You know what Justice said? I'd, I'd rather wait next week. That's the reason I asked Dr. Cho and Jameson what their thoughts were. See what the community spread impact is, if any. It's been good so far. But um, I get the procedure and, and Commissioner Eggers, I didn't expect that we had this 17 day buffer. Ahead of us either, but I do think we're setting the expectation if we set a, a public hearing for.
Well, we can.
I don't think you can pull it, Madam Chair, once it's out there as a public hearing. I just.
No, you're right. Well, I think we can, but we probably wouldn't. Um. Next week still gives us plenty of time to do it the first or the sixth. Okay, Commissioner Peters?
Um, I just wanted to concur with you, Madam Chair. I think that, I, I, I think it's a good thing to do. I, I, I think the community really wants it. Um. And we don't meet again until the 17th, so. That's a, that, that's, you know, the second weekend of October, if we were to do that. And, and I think if the numbers came up really, really high next week, cuz that would be the, the time Barry Berry was afraid of. Um, and that has a whole nother week that kids are in school. I, I don't think if the numbers are bad and we decided to defer it for another week or two. I, I don't think that's a really big problem, but I, I, I agree with you. I think we should advertise it. Um, for that date in early October. Um, and, you know, next year you can always, we can always defer it. Deferring it isn't a problem. And I, I don't feel that it's a problem, a problem at all.
Well, we can make that decision next week and still have it on the first. That's 14 days.
I believe that you could, and what we could do um, between now and, and your next meeting, a week from now. We could prepare the ordinance. We could get the language that would be necessary for the advertisement. We could work with Jeanette and her staff to get things coordinated with the Times. And, and find out exactly, you know, what the timeframe would be from them to get it placed and give you an update at that time. I suspect we could probably work with the Times and get in there, but I'm not going to guarantee that. Uh, cuz again, state law doesn't require a full 10 days' notice.
Well, I mean, even if we can't get it on the first, we have a meeting Tuesday of the next week, so. Okay. Um, does somebody else have their hand up? Commissioner Long?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to uh, agree with Commissioner Justice and Commissioner Welch. That I think that setting expectations that we may or may not be able to meet is just going to further. Anger our citizens when clearly they are looking for some specific direction. And I'd rather, I can't remember who said it now, but I'd rather see where we are next week. And be certain rather than be sorry and have to pull it all back. Cuz I can't imagine the citizens would react to that very favorably.
So we're gonna wait till next Thursday to make the decision to place it on the agenda for the first or the sixth, depending on which one we can do.
Good.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Seal?
I concur, and the other thing that I would like to know is, um, it was brought up earlier, and we, we've actually discussed it somewhat. But um, don't need to do it now, but next week, more of a picture of what the Department of Health and others are spending the COVID health monies on. Including if we do go back to no masks, making sure that we have an adequate contact tracing in place. Um, because if, you know, if it ramps back up, we're gonna, as everyone said, we're gonna be back in the same situation as we were before. And we certainly do not want to stop, shut down businesses or shut the county down again. So we need to have some reliable information to help guide us. Thank you.
I guess, is it, is there anything in particular, not to drag this conversation out even longer. But is there anything in particular that people want to see um, next week in the data? That we don't already have or that we haven't already been getting uh, updates on? Commissioner Welch?
Uh, school data?
Yeah, I.
Um.
I want to, I want to be clearer about that, too.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, Mon, if you think of anything else, please let Barry know. Um, okay, we actually have. A motion from Commissioner Justice and a second from Commissioner Welch on extending the state of emergency for another week. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Um, item 46.
Item 46 is an ordinance amending our chapter 10, uh, 110 special assessments. Um, Kelly, brief view regarding some of the changes. Uh, this provides for more flexibility when we're doing special assessments. This is specifically around the Grand Canal, but, but would apply to any special assessment area. Uh, she is on the line. We're happy to take any questions you have.
And if I could speak up before you all take action on this, we do have, um, and I can, at the appropriate time. Uh, a minor modification that we would like to recommend to the language in the ordinance under the territories embrace section. Uh, if you do move forward, but I'll, I'll let Kelly present to you on the substantive aspect of the ordinance. But there is one minor change we would like to make to the language before the board takes action to adopt.
Yeah, thank you. Kelly?
Um, the clerk has something she needs to say.
Yes, thank you. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted, I need to say for the record, the public hearing was properly advertised. An affidavit of publication has been received for filing. There's no correspondence that's been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly Hammer Levy, Director of Public Works. Um, as, as Barry said, um, you know, part of the impetus for these updates are some of the activities around the Grand Canal. Uh, there are some improvements to the ordinance overall. Uh, the primarily what we're looking at is housekeeping in nature. Um, we did uh, propose to repeal chapter 130 related to public lakes. It's a ordinance from 1976. Its language is not um, in alignment with the current statutes related to non-advalorm assessments. And this would allow us to rule um, those types of projects into chapter 110 and have everything related to special assessments in one place. One of the other improvements made to the ordinance was to broaden some of the categories of special assessments. That communities could petition the county for. Uh, in our past, we have had navigational dredging, uh, drainage, uh, road improvements. But this would allow for any public improvements that um, met the specific criteria that the community, a community might want to petition the board for. With regard to um, you know, the Grand Canal, one of the components of the ordinance that we looked at was um, when we can administer the assessment. And uh, the current language um, really lends itself to, to assessing in advance of a project. And that works with um, non-advalorm assessments for street lighting and other types of things. Um, where we have a known cost and it's, it's easily um, calculated. But when we're looking at a, a construction project, um, and we can't provide that specific information to the public. It, it makes it very challenging to communicate well with the public exactly what they could expect in costs. And so this would allow, the change that we're proposing tonight would allow us to um, assess once the project's complete. And um, and we have total costs and, and we can share that with the public, and that way they go into it knowing, knowing what they might see. Um, with regard to the Grand Canal, um, as, as we discussed uh, this week. Um, we're sitting, still sitting at 52% in support of moving forward to um, get costs associated with the project. Uh, we have not received any additional updates um, from the community uh, or any additional parcels um, in support or not in support. We are meeting with the regulatory agencies that will be, will be re-proposing to, will be permitting this project um, on Monday. Uh, so this is when we'll hear from the federal uh, regulatory agencies as well as the state. Um, as to what they're looking for from us, very specifically in the permit application. We are um, out there collecting data, um, you know, in anticipation of uh, the design and the permitting. Um, but we want to make sure that we're checking all the boxes and, and that we're not gonna. Submit a package and then have somebody come back and say, well, we need this extra information. So we want to make sure that we've got it all right at the front. Uh, this will allow us to um, bring forth a petition in the spring to the community with those costs. So it'll be parcel specific, um, they'll have a total cost. Um, and then uh, that would allow us to um, move forward if the community uh, did support the petition. With regard to um, you know, the amendments to this, this chapter. Um, that's why we need uh, the change with regard to uh, assessing after. Um, so that will clean that up. The other pieces of the, of the assessment that'll come forward to you in the near future is the resolution. For the intent to utilize the non-advalorm assessment for this particular project. All it is, is holding our place, if you will, our ability to utilize the non-advalorm assessment process for this project. Um, that'll be in October, and then in November, we'll bring forth to you agreements with the tax collector and the property praiser for administering that. Those are, again, kind of housekeeping in nature, but they secure our ability to put this in place for the community. We have all of our I's dotted, our T's crossed, and then in the spring, when we petition the community with those costs. If they come forward and they want this project and we move forward, then we've got everything in place to move the petition forward and do the assessment. Um, so that we can get the project done for them.
And I'm sure the community, you've been collecting signatures, so we're getting there. We're ready to go, so.
We have questions?
Okay. If, if I could, Madam Chair, um, what I. If I could, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is to ask Brian to pull up. We did prepare some alternate language that is necessary. This relates to, if you look on page four of the ordinance that's included in your agenda, this is under the areas embraced section of your ordinance. This language is intended to make clear that when the county exercises its authority to undertake these assessments and they happen to lie in an incorporated area of the county, that we do have that power under our county charter. So I would ask that if you do move forward in adopting that the maker of the motion include this change to the ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner Peters?
I would make that motion to include that language.
Are you moving the whole ordinance, too?
Yes, I'm moving the whole ordinance with the addition of the language that county attorneys suggest.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Can he pop that back on the screen for a minute?
Yes, sir. One moment.
So you're just replacing the last sentence?
Julia, you're muted.
Sorry, I kind of lost where to get back. Yes, we're just replacing that last sentence again to make it clear that you would have this power within a municipality as well, under your charter power.
Okay, any other questions? Brian, do we have any public comment?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item, this is forty-six, correct, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And we do have two members of the public that wish to speak on this item, Madam Chair. We'll start with Don Bowler. Don, welcome back to the commission. You'll have three minutes to address the board.
Actually, Commissioner Gerard, may I beg your indulgence to kind of backtrack just a little bit?
I, no, not.
No, it's not to you. It's not to you.
No, I mean, we, guys. We need to be addressing this ordinance that we're dealing with right now, or this.
I I understand, but there's something that really needs to be said, and I don't know if these people are hearing this right now, but there's something that really does need to be said. I'm sorry, I've tried not to break down on this call. I made the mistake of sending out my phone number to a couple people. I received a text of a laughing emoji, and I'm telling you, I mean, people are talking about immunity and anger and depression and anxiety, lower the immunity system, and I'm trying to find a way to fix me. And I know what you guys are getting in your emails, I know what you're getting on your voicemails, and I'm sorry, it's just wrong. And now that it's coming to me because I've been speaking for so long, I just wanted to give you guys my word. I'm done speaking. I'm pulling myself out. I did not want the response that I got. It's not why I started speaking at all. But I'm telling you, what these people are doing is so wrong. And I give you my word, I will never speak on another meeting. If I have questions, I will email them to you. I spoke with Commissioner Eggers. And I'm so sorry about what's going on in this county. It's just wrong, and I'm trying to fix me. I'm trying to fix my anger.
Thank you, Ms. Bowler, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Dave Waddell. Mr. Waddell, you have three minutes to address the board.
God bless you, Don. I understand your struggle. This too shall pass, okay?
Dave, can you please address your comment?
I'm going to, I'm, I want to talk about the Ecological Service Unit. I recently spoke with Brian Brown, and we've had a lot of reorganization in the county that I'm just now trying to get familiar with, and they're the Ecological Service Unit, Water and Navigation, and he is the program manager. And Kelly Levy was kind enough to forward me to this gentleman. And Kelly, good evening, and I want to thank you for all your hard work. Holy cow, we're blessed to have such a group of talented people. I thought we'd end the night on a good note. I want to thank you. It it takes real courage and fortitude to do what you folks do. And it does also take that on, of course, on your citizens and, Don, my prayers and God's blessings, and my prayers and God's blessings to the entire board and the entire Pinellas County and the United States of America. I mean, we're all Americans, and we hold within ourselves the opportunities to solve problems, no matter how difficult, okay? And we're going to put our faith in you, and it's a blind faith, but it is faith nonetheless. And those that argue differently, well, they don't believe, and I'm not talking about any particular religion, but you have to believe in your human mankind and the humanity that we are all instilled with, with our innocence as children, okay? We reflect back and we watch, and maybe we learn, but history has to teach us to be very, very cautious, otherwise we will repeat our mistakes.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much for your time today, and God bless all of you, and God bless the United States of America, and.
Thank you. Okay, is that the last caller?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and second, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Welch, thank you. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item forty-seven.
Good luck.
Sorry, I was unmuting. Item forty-seven is a proposed ordinance amending chapter one-twenty-two, article four of the Pinellas County Code related to golf carts. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Commissioners, this this item has one ordinance and four separate resolutions. They, this would allow for golf carts use under certain conditions and four separate areas, so we would need a passage of both the ordinance and then separately, either individually or as a group, the four resolutions for the four specific areas. And Kelly, is a staff person available to answer any specific questions?
Okay. I thought we could, I thought I saw somewhere that we could take them up together, the four, for the different communities, okay?
You can take the four, you have to pass the ordinance separately, and then you, yeah, and then combine the four.
Okay, okay, do we have questions? This has been a long time coming, I think.
It has, it got, it had a COVID delay.
Do we have any callers about this?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item forty-seven, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we have no public comment on this item.
I think we do have any questions?
Move approval of the ordinance, please.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, and then we need a motion for the four separate community, the resolutions for the separate communities?
Correct.
Somebody be willing to make that motion?
Move the four resolutions.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on the four resolutions, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we have one member of the public that wishes to comment, Mr. Dave Waddell. Dave, go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Dave, please keep, please confine yourself to golf cart.
Real short, golf carts, golf carts were safe. Us old folks, we just had a fellow in the neighborhood. He bought a $6,000 golf cart, so now he's in charge of our security force, and he uh, he drives around the neighborhood, and his son, by the way, is a Largo police officer. So we've got good security, and I think it's a way for the old folks to get around. Okay, I'm done, thank you, God bless again.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Eggers. If there's no further comment, all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand, something, please indicate. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have one more item, right?
Yes. Commissioners, well, I'll look to that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so item forty-eight is for the proposed resolutions adopting the tentative millage rates and budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. There were forty-nine phone calls that have been received regarding the trim notices, but no regular correspondences were received, the matters before the board to be heard.
Okay, well, I will read my script then, bear with me. Good evening, tonight's public hearing is the first of two public hearings for the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year twenty-one millages and budgets. Before we get started, I'll walk through the sequence of events for tonight. One, the county administrator will present changes to the proposed budget since it was originally presented to the board on July twenty-first. Then the county administrator will provide a budget overview presentation that incorporates these changes, a brief one. Three, we will accept public comment in the following property tax levies and budgets by the following taxing authority classification. The first one, the BCC countywide levy for the Pinellas County General Fund and the county levy supporting the Health Department Fund. Then the levies for special, dependent special districts and unincorporated area municipal taxing service units that going forward will be referred to MSTUs. Dependent special districts include the Emergency Medical Services Authority and the Pinellas Planning Council, and the MSTUs include the unincorporated area municipal services unit, public library services district, Palm Harbor Community Services District, Feather Sound Community Services District, East Lake Library, Library Services District, East Lake Recreation Services District, and the Special Fire Protection Districts. If you wish to speak regarding the tentative millages and tentative budgets, you will be instructed at the proper time to raise your hand in the virtual meeting. After hearing all public comments, I will ask the board if they recommend any further changes to the tentative millages or tentative budgets. If so, I will ask the board for a motion and a vote to adopt any changes. Finally, we will adopt the resolutions for the fiscal year twenty-one tentative millage rates and tentative budgets, budgets, which will be the basis for the final budget public hearing that will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-second at six P M. In accordance with Florida statutes, the tentative millage rates will be adopted first, and then the tentative budget will be adopted for each taxing authority. Before we begin the public hearing, if anyone has special, specific questions or concerns regarding the assessed value of their property, exemptions or classifications related to your property or information on the trim notices, please contact the Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office at seven-two-seven-four-six-four-three-two-zero-seven, Monday through Friday, eight A M. to five P M., or email mike@pcpa.org. Florida statutes also provides that a taxing authority may adopt the tax levies and budgets of all its dependent special dis, taxing districts and MSTUs by a single unanimous vote. However, if a member of the general public requests that the tax levy or budget of a dependent special tax district or MSTU be separately discussed and separately adopted, we will then discuss and adopt that district's tax levy and budget separately. At this time, does any member of the general public request separate discussion or a separate adoption of a tax levy or budget of any dependent service dis, special district or MSTU? Please do not raise your hands if you have questions or comments about tentative budgets or tentative millages at this time.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to request separate discussion or separate adoption of tax, a tax levy or budget of any dependent special special district or MSTU, please press star nine if you're joining us by telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we have no one that wishes to speak.
Okay. Since we have not heard from anyone requesting separate discussion and separate adoption of any, excuse me, dependent special districts or MSTUs, we will proceed with adoption of the tentative millages and tentative budgets by single unanimous vote. We will now open the first official public hearing on the FY twenty-one millage rates and budgets.
This public hearing is being held in accordance with chapters one-twenty-nine and two-hundred of the Florida statutes. The meeting has been duly noticed by the property appraisers mailing of the trim notice.
Thank you. We, the Board of County Commissioners, as taxing authority for the BCC countywide dependent special districts and MSTUs as previously referenced, will now proceed with the public hearings.
In accordance with Florida statutes, I want to publicly note that the percentage increase in the millage rates for all budgets over the rollback rate, based upon the maximum rates on the trim notices and subsequent decreases to the two such rates, to fund the FY twenty-one tentative budget is four-point-four-eight percent, is a four-point-four-eight-eight percent increase over the aggregate rollback rate. The primary purpose for the increases in the millage just over the rollback rate are due to the following. In the general fund, including unincorporated area MSTU, Health Department Fund, Emergency Medical Services Authority, revenue increases are required to support personnel and operating expenditure levels that are driven by inflationary factors. In the general fund, the revenue increase is also required to build reserves to maintain future stability of services and consideration of consideration of anticipated revenue decreases in future years due to the economic impacts resulting from COVID-nineteen pandemic. In the public library services district MSTU, the Palm Harbor Community Services MSTU, the Feather Sound Community Services MSTU, the East Lake Library Services MSTU, East Lake Recreation Services MSTU, and nine special fire protection districts, revenue increases are needed to support increased expenditures by the agencies providing services in those districts. In the other three fire protection districts, the revenue decreases are due to those having sufficient reserve levels to provide future planned capital along with property values that can support annual operations. Chairman, before we begin the FY twenty-one budget presentation, I want to note that a schedule of changes to the proposed budget was distributed to the board on September fourth, two thousand and twenty, and attached to this agenda packet available online. Modifications to both the board-directed changes approved at the BCC meetings or work sessions and technical adjustments related to accounting presentation, updated information, corrections, and other minor changes. We will now continue with the FY twenty-one budget overview presentation. If you go to the first slide. Commissioners, I'm pleased to present the budget as you see before you. The little over $2.7 million is our total budget. This is a sixty-one million, three-point-four percent decrease, including reserves and cares. Our reserves have increased significantly, as you know, related to our multi-year strategy. The total budget is up one hundred and six million, nine percent in total budget. The total budget is up 106 million, 9% in total budget, but the, and the general fund is up 1.5%, which is 0.8% increase. As you can see, we went to great lengths to minimize increases, increase our reserves, and keep our spending low. Again, you're seeing a decrease in our general, in our board, general fund departments over last year's expenditures, except for certain inflationary factors amongst those raises. We continue to have the lowest debt per capita among the other urban Florida counties. Now I'll turn it over to Bill Berger to go through some of the very specific budget changes.
Thank you, Barry. I'll try to make this quick. What we're going to review here is some of the highlights of the 15-page document that we distributed that shows all the details of the changes to the proposed budget. Starting with reduced millages for six fire districts, I'll mention again later. We have additional funds to support the supervisor of elections and the general election, the staffing agreement with the clerk of the circuit court. We have additional funds for behavioral health initiative that you're a part of. That's $1.4 million in total, of which $860,000 was an increase versus the proposed budget. $500,000 of that 1.4 was transferred from general government to human services to support that moving forward. As you discussed at a previous meeting this month, or last month, I'm sorry, additional funds for EMS enhancements for Largo Squad 38 and the Reddington Beach Medic Union, the state budget eliminated chip fund, so we had to make a change for that. And then we also increased reserve levels in various operating funds, and that was basically a result of recalibrating what our expectations were of personal services revenue or expenditures in each of the departments. And that generated a total of about $11 million across all funds and about $3.8 million in the general fund. Moving on to the next slide, we have addition of the Sawgrass Lake, Sawgrass Lake Mobile Home Park. It's a Lowman Solid Waste Collection Disposal District. I'll be joining that district. So we had to make a change to accommodate that. The state shared the specific numbers related to juvenile detention costs, and we have changed relates to that. You may recall that we had mentioned during the proposed budget that we had appropriated all 170 million of the cares funds in FY20. So what we did for the FY21 budget was carried for the amount that we anticipated will actually be expended within the FY21 budget year. And then finally, the updated user fees for solid waste, which is to the deposit rate that folks pay at Scale House when they come in, and then also a couple of small changes to the Building and Development Review Services be scheduled mostly related to a seller. Next slide, please. Finally, the rest of the changes are related to various grants award, grant awards and contracts for services that were updated, ending the timing and scope of projects within the six-year CIP. As we get through the year, we learn a little bit more about what needs to carry forward, what projects were done more quickly. Finally, updating FY20 estimates and carry forward into FY21. And then the last item is a series of technical adjustments and corrections. This falls into the category of oftentimes, we just realize that we made a mistake and we found it, so we make a correction going into the FY21 budget. We'll be on to the next slide. Couple of traits specifically. Again, no proposed increases to any millage rates. General fund unchanged since FY14, as well as the EMS fund. Health Department hasn't changed since FY18, when we increased it to support the school nurses. The MSTU, which hasn't changed since FY09. And then, as I mentioned, in the unincorporated fire districts, we have six districts as listed that are decreased, and the other six are unchanged. Next slide, please. As far as a budget timeline, we are on our first public hearing. Our second public hearing, as mentioned earlier, will be on September 22. We start the new fiscal year on October 1. And then while we, our statutory require to have our budget posted by no later than October 23, we do try to publish that by October 1. And we're looking forward to hopefully being able to do that using our new Questica software that we're finalizing the implementation on.
Okay, are there any questions from the board about the presentation? Okay. We'll now continue this public hearing as taxing authority for the BCC countywide dependent service districts and MSTU levies, as previously referenced, by taking public comment from citizens who wish to be heard regarding our FY21 budget.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on the FY21 tentative millage rates or budgets, please hit star nine if you're joining us by telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's no one that appears to wish to comment.
Okay. Does any member of the board recommend any changes to these tentative millage rates or tentative budgets? Okay. Okay, board must now consider the resolutions to set the tentative millage rates and tentative budgets. As stated earlier, we will adopt the tentative millage rates and tentative budgets in the following sections. One, the BCC countywide. Two, the dependent special districts and MSTUs. The resolutions adopting the millages and budgets require a unanimous vote. If the unanimous vote is not received, we will need to adopt each of these separately. Okay. These resolutions adopt the tentative military rates and tentative budgets, tentative budgets. The resolutions for adopting the final military rates and budgets are scheduled for the next public hearing on Tuesday, September 22 at 6:00 PM. I will now ask the county administrator proceed with the readings and for Brian Zumwalt to display Schedule A that will be referenced during the readings and vote, and votes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will now, I will now announce each resolution separately for the board's action. Per Florida statutes, the board will vote on the tentative millage first, and then the tentative budget for each taxing authority. We will then start with the consideration of the BCC countywide milit rates and budgets, which include the Pinellas County General Fund and the county levy for the Health Department Fund. For the Pinellas County General Fund and the county levy for the Health Department Fund, I reckon, I recommend adoption of the tentative millages outlined in Schedule A, which is in your handout and being displayed, and was previously posted to the county website.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the tentative millages?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Seal. Is, are there any comments, questions? Not all in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Now recommend adoption of the tentative budgets.
Right, may I have a motion to adopt the tentative budgets?
Move approval of the tentative budget, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. With that, unless the board members have any further comments, this first public hearing for the FY21 budget is closed.
Commissioners.
No.
We have not yet adopted the dependent special districts and MSTUs.
Correct. Sorry. It's a long script. There's a lot of different.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry. We will now consider the tentative military rates and tentative budgets. Thank you, Bill. Tentative budget, those dependent special districts and MSTUs.
Yes, and I recommend adoption of tentative military rates for the special districts and the MSTUs as detailed in Schedule A, which again is in your paper handout and is being displayed and was previously, previously posted to the county's website.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the tentative millages?
Move approval of the tentative millages, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously.
And now recommend adoption of the tentative budgets.
May I have a motion to adopt the tentative budgets?
Move approval of the tentative budgets. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Seal. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Okay. With that, unless the board members have any further comments, this first public hearing for the FY21 budget is closed.
Commissioners, please note that the county will advertise the budget summary and the notice of tax increases in advance of the second public hearing in accordance with Florida statutes. This notice will be published in the Tampa Bay Times on September 20. The second and final budget, public budget hearing will be on Tuesday, September 22 at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
I would like to just end by again thanking all of our constitutional officers, our appointed authorities, and our department heads for all of the work they did to bring you the budget.
And remotely at that. Oh, yeah. And I believe that's all our business for this evening.
Well done, Madam Chair.
Say what?
Thank you, everybody.
Well done, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Say that again. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
See you.